Good, my name is Chris Pfaff. Welcome to tonight's meeting. I will be chairing tonight's meeting. Tonight's meeting will be recorded by Westcat. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to record tonight's meeting? Okay. As a reminder, I'd like you to ask to please turn off all cellphone ringers. The agenda is available at the back of the room. Meeting will follow the order on the agenda. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated with respect. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments. The board will then ask questions of the applicant, and then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it's time for the public comment period, I will call on those wishing to speak to the podium. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. All comments and questions will be directed through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak who want to, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. Abby, any changes to tonight's meeting?
No, no changes.
All right, we get started. First one up on the list is the police headquarters. Minor modification, EIDR. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Rick Almeida from Golden Wadi Architects. Thank you for your time. I'd like to introduce the design team members that are here today with me. Mark Gabriel from Par, civil engineer, and Brian Bacon from Brown Sardina Landscapes Architects. Just kind of summarize why we were here. So, the last time we were here, back in October, we were applying for the permanent plans, the EIDR permanent plans, which were approved back in October 2015. Subsequent to that, the evolution of the constructions documents were ongoing, and ongoing meetings were being held with the town until the project went out to bid. So, there were two components to this. One was the Deerfield early site package, which went out to bid on October 1st. And then the second part of this was the police project, which went out to bid February 1st. Bids were received on March 26th, and then there was a town meeting to vote to proceed with CIA funds early in May at that time. So, just to give a little bit of history in terms of the timeline of when we met and to this point. So, many of the changes that you see on the plans are attributed to the, some of them were to the project value engineering, while others were a result of the evolution of the construction documents when we met, to the point where the project went out to bid in February of 2016. So, what I'd like to do is just kind of go over some of the, you know, major changes, and then just leave it open for any questions you might have. Or if you'd prefer, we can go bullet point by bullet point on this memo.
I have an overall question.
Sure.
The value engineering, why is that coming up now? Because on the timeline, it was put out for bid, and I assume that it was put out for bid without the value engineering? Because, or was it? Because we approved the plan, and then it went out for bid, and I thought it came under? Did it come under? No, it didn't?
No, with the value engineering preceded the bid, what it was, was we had an estimate as to what the cost might be, you know, as a range. And we wanted to make sure that it been within the bid price, the bid amount that we was suggesting at town meeting. And so, we did the value engineering, so took the elements out of the bid, and then put it up again.
And so, now, so that was a while ago, but we're just catching up here with those items?
Correct, yes. So, with that said, I would like to have Mark Gabriel present some of the civil changes that were, that occurred since the last time we met.
Okay.
Mark, do you mind?
Hi. All right. Hello, my name is Mark Gabriel with Par Corporation. As Rick mentioned, some of the changes that have occurred since. Briefly, just explaining the process. I'm just gonna do a broad brush of the changes in the civil drawings. I'm not gonna hit every bullet point here, but if there is a question on a specific bullet point, please, you know, let me know. I'll flip through the slides briefly, as well as I go through that broad brush. And then, after that, we'll move on to a brief description of landscaping and then building exterior. And I'll be passing that off to the project team once we get there.
Okay.
All right. So, briefly, on the C 2.0 drawing, which is in front of each of you, there's two drawings laid out there on the table. We just highlighted in blue some of the areas that we had clouded as part of the revisions. One notable one is the front entrance drive to the town hall. There was originally, it was approved to be just a slight realignment of that driveway to straighten out. But through the, as we mentioned, the value engineering process, we ended up just keeping the actual, what is there today, alignment of the town hall driveway, which still works with the design intent of the approved plans. And in the end, the contractor will be paving that over, resetting some of the curb along that driveway, and making it look as if it is brand-new in the future conditions. So, it's one of the bullet points we have on here. The, I'm not gonna get into the details of it right now. It'll be discussed later with the landscaping. But an offshoot of the driveway is the plaza area. That was just to bring the project up to speed to what ended up as the evolution of that plaza area there. Like I said, that will be spoken to in a little while. The, a band of concrete paving, if people recall, you have the town hall, sorry, in the front, you have the police station there just behind it. And the Sally Port comes just off the north side of the police station. It's the leg that comes up just behind the town hall there. The Sally Port is that area, just to the north of the police station. There's a pedestrian access that's been there as part of the approved plans. In the plans that followed, proceeded, that came after the approved plans, a concrete walkway was put in front of the Sally Port door there to kind of create that, complete that pedestrian access in front of the Sally Port doors to the parking area, to the north of the Sally Port, and to the entrance to the south of the Sally Port to the police station, also to complete that connection over to the plaza area. The overall pedestrian movements and connections throughout the site, as you can tell, that was just one of the changes there that was made. That was just the change that was made to that. There were really no other changes to pedestrian circulation. It was still the same as, that was on the approved plans. The mechanical yard fenced-in enclosure, we just called that out as the drawings evolved a little bit. Some of the equipment in there was fine-tuned, and it still sits in the same spot as it was in the approved plans. It just has a different type of geometry to it, and it has the mechanical equipment more defined as to what ended up being designed in that area. More detailed calls were added to the plans, you know, just for the contractor to know for construction, such as granite transition curbs and wheelchair ramps, et cetera, but all still following the same pedestrian circulation that was there before. There was a question I heard just about crosswalks. The approved plans before showed a crosswalk at the intersection of the police emergency egress driveway and High Street. There's a crosswalk across there. The design intent of that is actually just a concrete walkway at the end of the driveway. It's very similar to what some of you may remember for the fire station project was requested to be on there. It was just to have the sidewalk continue through the police access driveway as concrete. There's no striping proposed in that area. Over on the Westwood Glen Road, is the new access to the parking lot behind, well, the existing access to the parking lot behind the town hall that's just being redone. And then the Deerfield Avenue extension connection to Westwood Glen Road, both of which have crosswalks delineated with pavement striping. That was also on the approved plans previously. I just know that there was a question about that. Briefly, this is just, this is a grading plan. No real changes on this. The utility plan, as the contractor constructed Westwood, oh, sorry, Deerfield Avenue extension, there was a couple minor changes to some drainage features associated with the construction of that. It's considered here in these plans. It's shown on these plans. And then, during some final permitting review with that and Westwood Water District, on the bottom of the plan, that long blue cloud, there was a request from them to have one water service coming into the site with two services tapped off of that for the police station. That was included in the construction documents. So, there's one line coming up to the driveway. The approved plans had two lines, two separate lines coming up the driveway to service the building. Now, it's just one line with two lines tapped off of it. But same thing, similar intent, building serviced by water, fire hydrant in the back. And briefly, sorry to go backwards again, C 2.0. We were here in front of the planning board a little while ago about some changes in regards to the emergency access driveway in Westwood, I'm sorry, Deerfield Avenue, across from the American Legion. There was a widening of that driveway there to allow the fire trucks to be able to make the turn. That is incorporated into these plans. Excuse me. There was some discussion about slope granite edging being incorporated into that design to, in case the fire truck inadvertently hit the curb there. That's included on these plans, the slope granite edging. There is a point at which the slope granite edging transitions to granite transition curb, to granite vertical curb, and that was requested to be on the plans. I know I got a markup from the board about that, and that is included on the documents in front of you as well. It's not clouded because it is, it was something that was already approved, but it is included in these plans here. All right? With that being said, that's just a broad brush over some of these bullet points. Like I said, not all of them. Very happy to answer any questions, either now or after the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While you're up there, want to we have any questions from board members, this gentleman on what he touched on?
Sure. So, could you run over all the pedestrian connections? Because it's hard to see, and I have a small.
The eleven by seventeen plans?
Yeah. Maybe it'd be helpful if you could gesture up at the screen. We can follow along with what we have in front of us.
Sure.
Yeah, if you're able to juggle all that.
The interior sidewalk.
All right. So, as I mentioned, the pedestrian connections still follow the same spirit of the design, the approved plans with, I guess we can start at the north side of the town hall. There's still the pedestrian connection from the north side of the town hall out. There's an accessible ramp here. There's some stairs that are proposed in this area. All have been actually constructed today as part of the Deerfield Avenue extension project, and that allows pedestrians to go both to the west and east side of the town hall to enter into the parking lots over there. In regards to the front of the police station, the west side of the police station, there's still the plaza, there's a plaza area out here still, with connections over into the parking area in front of the police station as part of the project, and then connections into the town hall on the south side, with pedestrian connections from the plaza area to the front of the Sally Port leg of the building. There's a pedestrian connection in here that goes along. This is the new concrete walkway through here, in front of the Sally Port doors. And then a connection over to the parking area, in over on the north side of the building. And there was, there is, sorry, a connection over to the front of the Sally Port area as well. So, that's a pedestrian connection over on this east-north side of the police station. Lastly, behind the police station for where they usually would likely be parking a lot of their cars, there's a connection into the building in the backside here. Deerfield Avenue extension is constructed, but there's a connection from Westwood Glen Road, sidewalk connection all the way down Deerfield Avenue extension to the school, which is out there today.
So, behind the police station, there's just a sidewalk that gets you to the doors in the building. It doesn't go anywhere?
Correct, yep.
And... So, by the dumpsters, the sidewalk goes around the dumpsters?
Correct.
It goes back to the middle of the parking lot, and is there a pedestrian ramp there? Or it doesn't look like this?
Yep, there is a pedestrian ramp by, on the north and south side of the Sally Port doors. There's a curb ramp there.
And then, as you follow there to the police station?
Yep.
Behind the dumpsters, and you go back again to the?
To the plaza area?
Yeah, to the plaza area. Doesn't look like there's one there.
There's a connection right in between the two. For the plaza area to behind the dumpsters, there's a connection there to allow the pedestrians to make that.
To the C level.
Correct, correct.
The plaza, I think what he's gesturing is you go up towards the parking area alongside the dumpsters.
Yep, this direction here.
Yep, now go up towards the parking.
And then go up?
Alongside the dumpsters. No, alongside the dumpsters.
Oh, this way?
No, the other side of the dumpsters.
This way? Oh, right here?
Yeah. Is there a way to get to the parking lot grade by way of a ramp at the end of that walkway?
By way of a ramp? No, there isn't a ramp in this section right here. The ramp is right over here by the Sally Port.
Right. So, shouldn't there be one there?
We didn't see the need for the ramp there, because it would be right at the back of a car, be rolling into the back of a car.
Oh, it's right there, right there?
Correct.
So, why is that sidewalk even there, then?
Just if someone's sneaking by, getting to the trash bins, something along that line. It just allows full access around it.
What is that area, just to the left of that? It's designated by the letters L.A.
It's a landscape area.
Okay. Any plans? I couldn't see the.
Yep, and the plants and such in that area.
Existing, the entrance to the, from High Street.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's asphalt now.
Correct.
And... So, shouldn't that be upgraded to also ramps? So, I don't know how, the curb goes fairly level, right?
Mm-hmm. You're talking across, if you, one was the pedestrian travel going this way? Going north on High Street?
Yeah, so the...
We're just leaving what is there today for ramps. We're just leaving that as it is. The project is only proposing to repave just the driveway that's there.
So, you're not touching the existing sidewalk?
We're not touching that.
Alongside High Street?
Correct.
Why wouldn't you take the opportunity to, you know, make that fully comparable, fully accessible at this time?
All right. That's a good question. I can bring that up with the project team, but right now, it wasn't.
So, the, I think, I just go by there just now, but I think it's level, so there's not a drop-off.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's the case right now.
But you could use a crosswalk painted in the deck aisle, maybe.
Okay.
Now, on the one going out from the town hall to Westwood Glen, there's, it looks like there's one on, both of them right now have curves, six-inch curves.
Mm-hmm.
So, it looks like if you're doing one side, I don't see any indication on the other side of it, whether it is wrong to the area.
Correct. So, that's just the sidewalk in here, the limits of the project that was just repaving the sidewalk in this area? There was no replacement or redoing any of the sidewalks or curb ramps in that area? There are curb ramps, though, that exist there today.
They're not, no, they're not. I just flipped.
Right in that spot, right there?
Yeah, the six-inch high curve.
Okay, I thought that that was a curb. Okay. Oh, that's a good question. I can bring that up to the project team as well.
Again, after we get ramps and crosswalk there.
Yep. At this point, yeah, that's not in these plans.
Yeah, I mean, those things are here, so we should do them.
Sure, I understand.
More questions?
Well, that, I think we covered the drainage, because I noticed in here, there was one of those old drawings, we somehow keep slipping in on the catch basin, and it's actually a three-foot minimum sum, four foot, four foot, for deep sum, but it...
Yep.
It should be four feet minimum in all cases.
It is four feet minimum in all cases, yes.
And what about hoods?
They are required to have hoods as well, correct. I'll take a look at that diagram for you, but that's correct.
I can totally run.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. That's in the contract documents, four foot sums, three with hoods.
Any other questions, head board members? Okay.
Yeah, at this time, I would like to ask Mike to talk about this slide in regards to the landscape and site features. This is some of the budget that identifies line item or the project for those site features and landscape. Would you like to elaborate?
So, as I understand it, there are certain elements that have been eliminated from the bid documents that went out, namely, some benches, some landscapes, and some pierce of Steve's heart, bike racks. Those were eliminated again to make sure that they came in at one, that we've already talked at the town meeting about, so if we make an adjustment, with the understanding that if the bid came in on the budget, which you did, or underestimated, that we would simply add those features back in, not as part of the contract, that the town would install those features at end of the project, while off. So, the money's, the bid price again was sufficiently under the need with contingency of what we needed to construct it, so there plenty of money allocated for appropriate town meeting. So, we will and have reserve those funds, and the project will be able to begin to track them to procure your landscaper to do for which it's outs, and will procure those appropriate benches, and install the bike racks and racks.
Right, could you, are they indicated on the plans where they are?
Yes, yeah, we, yeah, what we'd like to do is, I'd like to bring Brian Bacon, Landscapes Architect, to talk about the landscaping. So, again, landscaping was an evolution of the construction documents, as I stated before, and also, so, and also some value engineering. But, so, many of these changes are attributed to quantities. And there were some added quantities, and there were some quantities that were subtracted because of the evolution of the plans from the, from October up to the point they went out to bid. So, Brian?
I'm Brian Bacon, Landscapes Architect, Brown Sardina. To answer the question about the benches, the bike racks, and the trash receptacles, those were value engineered out of the project, so they came off of the drawings. On previous drafts, they were identified where they should go. But the DPW can decide where they can go based upon the timing that they install. To follow up on what Mark was talking about with the plaza, the plaza was previously shown as a circular lawn panel. That was revised from a circle to a square panel that you now see. And that, the square panel was shown to the working group in the beginning of last November, and they preferred the rectangular shape to the circular shape. Summarizing the landscape changes on page three, the majority of these bullet points are planting adjustments, as Mark and Rick have already talked about. Because of the design evolutions, some of the quantities were either decreased or increased based upon the addition of a detention area, parking and curb in adjustments, mechanical yard refinements, and the inclusion of a blast wall and the desire to screen that blast wall. Some planting was removed due to a stormwater basin. And with the exception of one additional flowering tree at the request of the chief, there were no changes to the species, just refinement in the quantities, as I said, are either increased or decreased. So, that summarizes, excuse me, the bullet points. It summarizes the bullet points on page three, and if there are specific questions, I can answer them now.
So, I don't know if, how fine are all these plans, because I think it would be better for us if the bike racks and these things were shown on the plans, so they were located. And just with a note saying to be supplied by others in a later date. Otherwise, we would risk of them not getting done.
A sketch can be issued showing the locations for, the suggested locations of the benches, bike racks, and trash receptacles.
Could you show us where that is?
The original design intent was to locate bike racks along the south facade of the town hall in between the two doors. The original design intent was to have a bike rack on the western facade of the main entry to the police station with one trash receptacle. And the second bench would be on the north facade. So, there would be two benches forming an L at that corner of the police station.
So, those one set of bike racks would go, would serve for both buildings?
Yes, yes.
And how many did you plan to have?
I believe there were originally four, three or four. The number escapes me. I don't know.
I think there were four in the original, if I remember.
So, that's, is that four racks with capacity of eight bikes?
Correct, yes.
And was the original plaza designed with the entrance into the side of town hall? Is that what I'm seeing here, with these two?
Those entrances into town hall, or is that access to?
Correct. These are existing doors, so the paving would go to the existing doors.
This is side entrance to the town hall, the stairs that leads down to the basement.
Okay, and that's where the bike rack was intended to go with the circular plaza?
Yes.
And now, you want to put it in between the two accesses?
That was the intent all along.
Okay.
Regardless of whether or not the shape was circular or the rectangular shape.
Okay. I just didn't remember the two side entrances, but you're saying it was always there?
Yes.
I don't have the original plans in front of me to remember that, but, okay.
I have a...
And are you gonna go so far as to put the concrete pad, or are you just gonna leave it and designate it for the town to do later?
The contract documents have stamped concrete, and the job and the bike racks would be surface mounted onto the concrete.
Okay.
So, yes.
So, then, all the town would have to do is drill holes and?
Surface mount?
Correct. The original permit plans showed, sorry, where am I?
I see it. Four bike racks right there.
Okay, right there.
Which remain, and then the bike racks in between.
Okay, gotcha.
So, again, regardless of whether, what shape that is, circular or rectangular, that location in the, so the paving doesn't change.
So, it's two benches and one trash receptacle?
And bike racks.
And bike racks?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the side features.
Okay.
By my knee?
Any questions about that?
Is that the, is that where the entrance would be? Like, it sounds good that there's benches and the plaza and bike racks, and all of that? Like, the best way to get into the building here?
Into the police station, you mean?
For, is it between the police station and the town hall?
It's adjacent to the town hall.
The two benches would be at this corner.
They'd make an L at the corner of the, of the fire station, I mean, police station.
And that location was selected in case anyone is waiting for a ride, you have visibility to the new parking lot.
And relating for pedestrian walkway, it's staying all same grade as it goes in front of here, or you have to step down and go to the asphalt and then climb back up the steps to go up to town hall?
You have to step down, because this is all planting within here. From the corner of the town hall to the entrance, existing to remain, and then there are some new additional plantings filling this corner.
So, if someone needed to park back here, it'd be in the handicap spot. The presumption is you'd follow up this side? So if someone needed to park back here, it'd be in the handicap spot, the presumption is you'd follow up this, this side? The north side of the building to access the store?
You would, you would access the town hall through the store to the north.
Okay, and the handicap ramps are there to make that available, and that's the only way handicap wise?
Because you can't get up.
So if a handicap person would find themselves here, they'd have to get to the parking lot here by way of this ramp?
Correct.
To be out front?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure there's a path that makes sense.
Any additional questions?
Any other landscape questions? Other board? No? Is there anyone from the audience that would make concerns? I see a number of people here, but might be for our other hearing, okay? All right.
So?
Well, I guess so.
Uh, so most of these things here, these value engineering, this is pretty much a done deal, because, uh, we don't, in other words, we don't have much choice here, because the money's not there to, to.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so the project was based, the, the bids come in based on these changes that we're, we're describing.
So? The ones I just, the ones that just I mentioned, like, bike rack, the benches, the landscaping, those were value engineered out, as we indicated. But if we get a sketch, we have the money set aside, and we will guarantee at the end of the project, provided there's no unforeseen issue, you know, you know, takes, like, just a thousand, six thousand dollars out of the project, we, we certainly, we can afford these, those elements at the end of the project, and we'll put them back in.
So things like, uh, concrete curving instead of granite curving, there issues as far as the durability of the concrete curving versus granite?
Why did he, instances that that occurred were?
We, yeah, we had, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, we had, I'm sorry, Mike, so we had reviewed that with DPW too, just to make sure that, so, what we tried to do is, we try, we kept, we kept the, uh, the durable granite curving in the high-traffic area, and the, uh, the, the, the precast granite curbing, uh, in, in a place, such, such places like the police access drive, which is only used by the police, but the front of the building, town hall and the police station, that's all granite curving. And that's what you have there now.
So, so where is, where were the concrete?
Concrete, as I understand it?
The police access drive.
The police access drive.
The side of the police.
Okay, yeah, that's the only place that would be.
We don't really need it. Granite there.
So, um, what I'd like to do is just go over the extra elevations of what changes took place. And, uh, again, more detail was, was added to the, uh, to the drawings to show downspouts, gutters, uh, building mounting cameras. So some of the noticeable changes, uh, um, would be, it's, it's really hard to see on the screen, it's probably better to, to refer back to the eleven by seventeens, but, so I'll start off with the, uh, so, starting off with the, uh, in the same order, we have the documentation, starting off with the east elevation, which is the, uh, the side facing the Deerfield Ave. Uh, more, uh, most noticeable things that you see here was, um, were the precast, we had a precast band. It's all circle, we had precast bands, that during the, the, the value engineering process, we thought it would be better to, to, uh, leave them on the, on the front face of the building visible to the public, and then changed that band to two courses of, uh, a soldier course. So that, so that was a change that we, we made, except for the, uh, the, the, the main elevation of the building facing High Street and the side that's visible to town hall, so that's, um, that was a common change that you'll see on the, uh, um, reflected on the south elevation. The, um, the north elevation, so the north elevation is, is the elevation facing Westwood Glen. And then the south elevation, which is the police access, access drive. Um, so that's the change we made, um, uniform throughout all of the, uh, the elevations. Uh, um, on the east elevation, we had a, we had a dormer, um, on the, uh, we had a dormer, uh, right above the entrance to the, on the, um, on the stair, uh, above the, uh, two floors up from the main entrance to the building. Again, as part of the evolution of, of the project, we, we needed to, uh, add five condensing, um, units to the, uh, to the mechanical unit, and because of the site limitations were limited, where we could put those five condensing units, they needed to be exposed to the, uh, exposed to the weather, uh, for functionality. And we looked at, uh, you know, uh, we looked at, you know, putting on the flat roof of the, uh, the detainee area, or the flat roof, uh, on top of the building, which is, you know, not highly desirable, because those are the most visible, uh, places on the roof, so in order to hide that as much as possible, we took that dormer away, we carved out a section of the roof to put those, uh, condensing, uh, units, which are adjacent, conveniently, conveniently adjacent to the hair and the unit in that attic space. So that's what you, you'll, you'll see there, uh, bubbled on the roof. To the left of that, we have a mechanical room on the south side of the building along the police access drive, and we have flues coming up through the roof, and, um, and aesthetically, um, we didn't want to leave those flues exposed, so we, we built, um, um, a flue, um, a flue to contain or to, to make that, that less noticeable, those flues that come up through the, um, from the mechanical room on the first floor, so it goes directly, um, up the, the building, inside of the building. There's another change we made here, which were the, uh, the, uh, we had a smaller canopy, um, to the back of the, uh, the police station, and in order to, to make that, um, much more, uh, appropriate in terms of weather protection, we, we thought it would be better, again in conjunction with conversations with the police chief and the town, to widen that canopy to serve both doors to the building. The, uh, the two doors of the, to the, to the right of that elevation, the Sally Port and the Evans Bay, we had those as glass doors. Um, talking to the chief, because of, um, visibility and security issues, he wanted those doors to be solid doors and not glass. That's where you're gonna bring in your detainees. Another change we made on this elevation was raising the, uh, the roof of the Sally Port and Detainee area on that same location to re, to raise that up so that, so that the roof, um, would, um, would accommodate a second floor expansion at a later date. So in order to work with the structure and to make sure that flat roof is in board with the finished floor to the second floor, we had to raise that also, that roof up slightly by two, two feet, two foot two. It was just the, it was just the E, we didn't change the slope at all. And then there was that, some, some, uh, some light fixtures and some cameras, uh, that we added to the building. Um, on the, uh, south, on the west elevation, um, again, I might, I might not be touching a, a lot of, about all of these different, uh, bullet points that I have here, but if you have any questions, please, please feel free to do so, I'm just pointing out some of the major changes. Um, on the south, on the south elevation, one of the, um, again, um, it shows the, uh, that, uh, that chimney, a mechanical chimney flue that you see there on the roof. The, uh, two windows were, windows were removed from the, uh, the locker rooms up on the second floor because of the efficiency of the space and the need for the chief to have as many lockers as possible to accommodate the staff, so we had to eliminate those windows. And then, uh, this dumpster in, this, um, mechanical yard enclosure, that's always been part of the project, but now it shows on this rendering where it didn't show before, but behind, behind that enclosure, the noticeable changes were, and you, you wouldn't see that because of the enclosure, are those three windows that you see that they were full height, now they're more clear story windows, and that's a result of, of the, um, chief's request for functionality of the, uh, interior space to make it more usable. And we deleted a window off of the, uh, bike storage space on that same elevation. On the north, the north, north elevation, noticeable changes there was the, uh, the mechanical, those two mechanical, um, louvers. After, after refining the mechanical duckwork on that attic level, we had to space them a little bit farther apart from what they were before. And shifted to accommodate the building structure. There was some reorganization of the windows on the second floor and the third floor to work with interior spaces, again, as part of the ongoing, um, progression of, of design, uh, with the, uh, with the town and the, uh, and the, uh, and the, the police department.
What's the material on the side of those dormers, those mechanic, mechanical louvers and the side of that mechanical chimney?
Yes, what it is, it's, it's, um, it would be a cementitious board, um, cementitious board, something like, like a hardy siding, durable, low maintenance, um, and, um.
Is that the only place where siding appears?
Yes, it is, yeah, it is, and that's also on that, uh, cutout of that roof on the, uh, east side of the building, where we have those five condensing units. And the intent there is to, uh, not, not bring attention to the, to the siding and try to, uh, and trying to blend in the color of the siding with the roof.
Okay.
On the main, uh, the, the main facade of the building facing High Street, um, changes included some of the, uh, we had some precast, precast bands on either side of, um, of the windows on the second floor, that main window on the second floor, and central window above the main entrance. And then, once again, um, the, uh, as you can see, we kept the precast on the main elevation of the building precast band, and then it turns the corner into the, uh, booking and processing area, um, and then we made that shift to soldier course because by then, all the stuff is be, behind the public, um, um, exposure. Uh, so, um, in trying to maximize the use of precast and to be cost-effective. Again, we made the changes on the two front doors at the Sally Evans Bay. Those, so those four doors were changed from full glass to solid panel doors. So those were some of the major changes, the other, other change we made here, and Mark touched upon, I believe, was the, uh, that blast wall, the brick wall that you see on the right side of the, uh, west elevation, and that's a, is a result of, um, uh, of the evolution of the construction documents and, uh, and sizing equipment. So there's a transformer there by, um, your utility requirements requires the, uh, any opening to the transformer to be a certain distance. The only, the only way we could accommodate that was, would be by providing this brick wall, this brick wall is gonna be screened by, by planting. Uh, if you refer back to the landscape drawings, you'll see that there'll be planting there to screen, to soften up, soften up that wall.
That, that's setback from the front?
It is setback from the front, yes, if you were, for back to the, uh, side lines.
Yeah, okay.
So this is some of the most noticeable, noticeable changes, so, uh, you have any questions and?
Uh, if you said it, I, I apologize if I didn't catch it, on the Sally Port in the west elevation, those two windows that appear bricked over?
Yes, yeah, we had, we had those, we had those as windows, um, in conversations with, with the chief, and because of the, uh, the nature, the natural use of the space, uh, it's booking and processing, it didn't want for, and also for security reasons, it didn't want glass there. So what we tried to do is, we tried to, um, to sort of, um, mimic, uh, a window pattern that we had there before, it's just that, it's just a, it's, it's a brick pattern with, with precast, um, uh, precast headers. It's a function of the interior of the space for security reasons, the chief didn't want any windows on that space.
And that, in reality, is actually behind town hall, so it's not gonna be seen from High Street?
Yeah, so those two windows were in the, uh, booking and intervening room and, uh, holding area.
Okay.
I still don't, not quite sure I get the mechanical area on the roof, what does that actually look like? Is that set into the roof?
Yes, it is, um, let's see if I can just get a better, here we go, so this, it's really hard to see on the screen, it might.
Use your, but what it is, it's just, uh, so this is, so this is sloping asphalt shingle roof, is it, my roof? This is literally, it's a cutout in the roof, so this is flat, so what you see, if you were looking at this direction, this way, that way, what you see, you'd see a triangle shape of the roof coming down, the vertical surface, there's a door that accesses this space from Evans.
So is there a shield in front of it, uh, to, so you'd be able to see the, these mechanical things that are there?
It's, uh, there is, the roof comes up, so there, there is some height to that, um, so there will be, there will be either partially finding, as you use, uh, fully, like, I, I can video them as well, I can video them on the top right now.
Okay, so the floor is not right at the bottom, it's lower?
It's lower, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not right at the face of that, the top of that, it's below that, I guess.
So you're not sure if the top of the condensers will extend beyond the slope?
Correct, yes, I'd like to tell you what that is, but, I don't know, we had to play with the geometry and the steel and trying to make that, that work. But, but again, one of our concerns is that we didn't want that to be publicized, because you don't want to see, you know, the, the padding, the, kind of, the pad for the units and the footing of itself, so, uh, it's partially hidden to a certain extent.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a, I have a few, if you don't mind, um, on the west elevation, and it was in the old version, a whole bunch of landscaping, I assume that's just not shown for clarity on the next one?
Correct, yes, we, um, we try, um, what we try to do is try to show as much of the building as possible. If you start adding landscaping, it, it was, it was for clarity.
Can see the changes you're talking about, I'm sorry.
Yeah, exactly, I totally understand, it's, yes, for clarity purposes, yes.
And then on the overall east elevation, on the little connector thing that goes between the tall building on the left and the short one on the right, what, what disappeared, there's some kind of a, sort of a porch or something?
What it, what it was, it was, it was a, it was an outside detention, um, cell
Okay.
that the chief, um, it was an alternate on the job, on the project itself, so it was, it was a detention area that, alternate that did not get, to get accepted, like Mike was saying, was to safeguard the beds, so that did not get accepted. And so, so, uh, that place just turned into just, just a wall, and then we included that one, that one light fixture there. In front of that now, it's all grass and shrubs.
So, whereas of the site planning stuff, we just talked about, a lot of that was, a fair amount of that was value engineering or just sort of design changes per construction condition, et cetera, and this is kind of a blend, right, there's a few value engineering moves, and there's a few just functional moves about coast making mechanical needs work, all that kind of good stuff?
Correct, yeah, it was a combination of, uh, and design functionality of the building, then as a result, it affected vice versa, landscape, um, to a certain extent, um, not, not really civil, but much more like between landscape and, and the, and the, uh, and the building functionality, and how, you know, one circulates around the, the space and the building.
Um, I guess I just have one comment, I, on the, just the little design changes, I find the, I find the, 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 uh, hardy board on the chimney a little peculiar, like, you kind of expect the chimney to be brick also. I don't know if there's a way to use, I assume the brick on a building is full white brick, it's a real caviar construction, it's not like thin brick, right?
No, no, it's, it's, it's the three and five eights, it's, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Um, I don't know if there's a way to look at making the chimney look like brick, like with a thin brick product or something like that, that might, it, I just, it kind of sticks out like a thumb, like, I'm a, like, I'm a fake chimney kind of thing?
We can, we can sort of look into that, we'll have to look at the structure and make sure, lintels to, to pick up the, the brick, yeah.
I think that was pretty much it, I would, I guess my last comment was these, the sort of chimney-like things that are on that connector piece, those little black guys, what are those guys? Are they just?
Exhaust fans.
Exhaust fans?
Yes.
Okay.
Which, which side of the roof are they on, 'cause it's, they always look like they're on the other side of the roof, where you're looking at.
No, it's not shown, yeah, it's not shown, I entirely, it's not shown on the opposite side, you, you would see it from the, the, the Deerfields Avenue as well as, yes, exactly, so it's, it's there.
The base is on the back?
Yes, yes. It's visible from, in both elevations, yes.
Some plantings were being moved or changed or real, eliminated, or was that?
No, we actually added some, so we added some plantings on the, um.
The plant, the raised planting?
Oh, the raised, yeah, the raised planter, there was, we had, uh, when we submitted the, the initial package, we had, uh, a raised planter, so I had, after much discussion, it was decided that, just go with, and you can, uh, help me, um, just in terms of specifics, Brian, but we, we went with, instead of a raised planter, we still have planting, but it's not a raised planter. And do you recall what those bushes were, those planters?
What, what area?
Oh, this, yeah. Oh, this area, let me see, this area.
Yeah, there's three different species that step up. So the purpose was to screen this side of the dumpster enclosure. So you have, as you come in, from the class, we have a low ground cover, which is about twelve inches. And then a small shrub, which is two, two and a half feet tall. And then get into smaller deciduous shrubs, which get to be about six to eight feet tall, which are so.
That's a replacing where the planter would have been.
Yes. But the concept of screening the dumpsters and just having a three-tiered system still exists.
I had a, a thought in addition to Trevor's. It, it does seem to make sense that a chimney may want to be brick. I've always found that when you try to hide something or conceal something, if you don't do a good job, it actually makes it worse. So I'm just wondering about, the only, you have two views that you'll see on the mechanical louvers. And that's from the west and the east elevation. I'm just wondering if maybe it should look like a dormer and have the brick on the two sides of, of the, the, the front and the back one? Or it, it would have to be on, on both, on all four, obviously, but just thinking what's visible from High Street. If the hardy plank doesn't blend into the oyster gray asphalt shingle, then it's going to call attention to it as a different material rather than trying to blend in. It's just a thought. I, I, I think either could work, I just don't, I'm fearful that the hardy plank may not pull it off as being inconspicuous.
We can sort of look at the options of brick, but.
Just a thought, dovetailing what Trevor said about the chimney. Any other comments or questions? Is that the extent of the changes you'd like to go over?
That summarizes the changes, yes.
Okay. Mike, any other comments you have to, care to make? Okay. All right.
Great, well.
Okay, any deliberation on the board? Comments you have to make?
Have we covered everything, Abby?
One other thing was, we had a request from the conservation agent and health director to install curbing around the dog kennel. Clean up waste plan. The dog kennel was always on plans, that was there in there through plans because.
Where's the dog kennel?
That's on the south side of the building. That's really for the one dog that we have, just for.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so it's right there. Yeah, that, right there where your pen is.
The changes to the mechanical area, they had looked at these and requested that clean up plan and curbing.
Is that another blast wall?
No, it is not. What, what it is, it's, it's an enclosure within an enclosure. So.
It looked more formidable than.
No, it's not. What it is, it's, so you have the PVC fence, the twelve-foot PVC fence that goes around, and then within that PVC fence, there's the, the actual dog kennel. That the chief is going to bring from the old station to the new station. But it is not a blast wall.
Okay. Okay. So I think what we need to do is determine that these are in fact minor modifications as they've requested. So if. We need a motion to determine that to be the case.
Actually, Chris, I know we asked it once kind of in the middle, but I don't know if there were any public commentary or anyone here from the public that's concerned about this project.
Seeing, oh, Mike, yes.
I just want to remind you, please insert in your vote that you require us to make up the.
Oh, the landscape omitted. Right. Okay, thank you for that reminder. Okay, with that.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation for everyone who spoke. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept these changes as being minor modifications to the previously approved plan? Still moved?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I think each one is mine, there are a lot of them, but I think as a whole, it's still a minor modification, even though it looks like a lot.
There are a number of changes, but I would agree with that assessment. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, they are minor modifications. So we now need to vote on the plan, the amended plan as presented this evening. Have a motion to accept tonight's plan? Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, accepting tonight's plan?
The conditions included is a part of that.
Oh, yeah, Abby, you want to read the? Sorry, Abby, you should read those.
The benches and trash, we just have to go on the plan with a note that they'll be added.
Going to be on a separate sheet.
On a sep- okay, on a separate sheet. And then we mentioned catch basins, you'll have a four apartment on some, like a hood. And then also, I saw the curbing around the dog kennel with the waste plan through the health department and conservation. And then there was a request, I don't know if it, there was a, the request for the change to the chimney?
Chimneys, yeah.
Did you, I don't know, are those, are those able to be included or is that just, no? It's just.
Those are just, I believe, comments.
They say they should consider, consider changing the chimney to be more.
If cost, if cost permits, I guess.
Cost permit and the PVC approval.
Yes, okay. Okay, we have the conditions read into the record. Everyone agree with the conditions? Yes.
And we mentioned, I don't know, they were going to look into the existing, upgrading the existing driveways, make sure that all the ADA components.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and further discussion with amendments. Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All set. Thank you very much. Appreciate everything tonight. Give us a moment to clean up from that. Just three ninety.
Right.
Try to, one more of this.
A little more careful this, a little more careful this time?
All right, next we have three ninety Washington Street. Redevelopment of an existing building for a convenience store, gasoline refueling station under a canopy and five off-street parking spaces. This was continued from our August second meeting. Good evening. Hi, welcome back.
John D'Souza from C-Post Consulting. Last time we were here, one of the, the larger concerns that I believe that the board had were site drainage improvements on the property. I spoke to my client, then in turn spoke to the owner of the property, and they came up with some sort of agreement to install some improvements on the site if the soils permit. If the soils did not permit the installation of a subsurface system, then they are in favor of putting the money that would go for that into the town and escrow fund or whatever to help with the purgatory brook drainage system of the town. We kind of spoke to Abby on this and communicated with that, and she helped come to that conclusion. I took her words and expressed them to the applicant. So we have updated the plans and actually they were emailed to her today. But I have a copy of the latest plans up here and I'd like to at least show the board what we came up with. So we can go from there. We also included a colored three D rendering, looking at a couple of different aspects of the site coming from the northwest and the, the southeast. So you can see in one almost head-on, so you can visually see that as well. We also revised some of the landscape and moved around some of the rotor dendrums and the hollies to put them on the north side to help out the neighbor that requested some maneuver into that. We incorporated that into the plans as well.
Okay.
So to start. On sheet four, you'll see we've actually installed a trench drain across the entryway here. We have one on the exit side as well. We have two catch basins on either side. We have a couple of manholes that actually connect, come across. And we also added some cleanout covers because we're handling the roof runoff from the canopy that goes in. And then you'll see there's three manholes on the backside here, that's a grid chamber. And then you're going to see a series of nine manhole areas. To help visualize the drainage system, if you flip to page number six. It kind of shows it in much more detail since that's the utility plan. On that, you can see the trench drain up across the front and it's connected to the manholes. You see the catch basins, you see the manholes connecting, you see the canopy is now connected into the main line that goes from manhole to manhole. Then it comes down, you see it going into the grid chamber. From the grid chamber, it goes into the leaching galleys. We're proposing basically a block of twenty-four leaching galleys. Leaching galleys are four foot wide by four foot high, the rectangular. It's a, basically a, well, perfect cube. And we've added some manholes so that way you can actually pop the covers, you can physically go into a grid chamber. And if you had to crawl from one to the other, you could. So that will help with the cleanout. Once a year, they're supposed to open the covers, make sure there's nothing in there that shouldn't be in there. So if we encounter suitable soils, this is basically the only location that we have on the site that has any sort of capacity for stormwater. So this is what we offered to the town. And in lieu, if we don't find suitable soils, then like I stated, we, we spoke with Abby and the money that would be used for this would go in, to the town, into an escrow account, if you will. And then the town can utilize that to help improve the drainage system that, that the town owns that goes into purgatory brook.
Okay.
So what do you think is the probability that you'll find suitable soil?
Actually, oh, see, well, one of the problems is under the New England soil logs, it shows this as urban. Urban is unclassified soil. It, it, it's a pain because you really don't know what you have. There could be a lot of fill here. But the one good thing is on the backside of this building, that is a leaching catch basin. So we went out there, we looked at it, and I, I did not see any standing water in the basin. So that tells me that there is some leaching capacity out here. So I'm hoping that we end up with something of a perk rates about four to eight inches. I mean, four to eight minutes per inch, which is not the best, but certainly not the worst either. So that will help. And then, we're not going to be able to mitigate the full hundred-year storm event, but we will be able to mitigate up to the twenty-five-year storm event in the first flush, which, which is basically your critical portion of any rainfall event because that washes away all your sedimentation and your floatables, your oils, your greases.
Is any part of that change, the grid system, any one of them going to act as a gasoline trip?
Our catch basins will have deep sumps with hoods in them. Our manholes will have deep sumps with hoods. And this grid chamber is a three-part chamber. So it has a first, a larger sediment area. The second is oil and gasoline with another deep sump hood in it. And then the third is a fine sediment area.
So most of the property is draining, the water is, is running towards those two catch basins?
Yes, and, and also along the front on the trench drains. So that should capture a good quantity of the runoff, that's.
So if you, if you had a hundred-year flood where the capacity this would keep up with it, everything would just fill up and we would just flow into the street?
That's correct.
Does now.
Yeah.
Abby, has the town engineer had an opportunity to review this?
Yes, he has. We received the plans today. He did think that this plan was a big improvement from what they're now. So we would prefer to see this, this proposed drainage improvements be completed. We don't have the, I don't know, I guess, some help, so the population has the soils test. So we have in the past conditions that those tests be done prior to construction and installing the leaching galley to confirm that first, and then I guess I had drafted in, in your memo here that if the town engineer agreed that the soil was not adequate, then we would want funds to be submitted in escrow to be used elsewhere for improving for the, this area for Washington Street or to help with purgatory. So that would be a preference, would be to have this.
On site.
But he's in agreement with the other condition of an escrow situation? Mr. Pines?
Um, yes.
The town engineers, okay.
So when you find out what the perking rate is, you're going to make a cut, and say it isn't quite what you had hoped. Could we still put this system in and instead of, you know, so it fails a hundred year now, we'd say fail a twenty-five year, but at least.
Right, the, the only way this system would not go in is if we encounter clay or if the water tables are at two feet. Anything up to a sixty-minute per inch perk rate will utilize. Anything after that, you're basically in clay. So we'll utilize everything that we can. And if we encounter a deeper water table, we may be able to even stack these. So we'll be able to contain more runoff as well. So it's dependent upon the suitability of it, and I'm hoping that the water table is down about ten, maybe twelve feet.
Okay. I think when, when last we met, there was a lot of concern about the monitoring wells for the fuel storage tanks. So was there still a concern about that?
Actually, on, on this sheet here, you'll see the last monitoring wells and you'll see the twenty-five-foot arcs. So as long as our infiltration system is outside of those arcs, we're okay. If it goes into it, DEP is really going to be upset. If it goes into it, DEP is really gonna be upset extremely. They'll shut us down.
What's the alternative?
Oh, well, see, what happens is the high probability rate that these walls get contaminated. And they're, believe it or not, they're open. So, if you pull the cover, you can basically drop a tube down there on a wire to collect a water sample. It's an open water source. So, the probability for contamination is extremely high. So, they wanna protect them as much as they can.
But you say you can get that all in there within the buffer zone?
Well, outside of their buffer zone, yeah. So...
And that's the reason why it's all in that back corner there.
That's...
The last meeting, the town engineer, too, had checked all those.
Yeah.
There's monitoring wells, right, with the twenty-five-foot buffer? So, that...
Yeah. One corner. There was a tiny little strip, but the catch basins there, over on that side.
Okay.
So, I think we utilized ninety-eight percent of the site.
Good job.
Okay, any other comments or questions by board members about drainage?
So, normally that you submit with your drainage plan, calculations?
Yeah, so we're gonna get all our calculations up to the town engineer with the assumptions that we have utilized. And then, once we do the percolation test, we will revise the drainage calculations to reflect the actual soil conditions that were encountered.
Okay, so you'll supply the calculations soon as possible and then?
Twice.
And then submit them again when you've done that?
Yes.
Yep. Abby, who's to determine the cost should this not work? That's gonna go into escrow.
I know. I had suggested somewhere around thirty to forty thousand.
Yeah. What we normally do, like, we provide to our client a construction cost estimate. So, the drainage system will cost it out. And we can furnish you a copy of what we believe the cost to that system is. And then you can have Tom or Jeff, sorry. You can have Jeff just review it, make sure that it's within his...
Okay, I'd feel comfortable if the town engineer had kind of final checkoff on, to make sure it's an adequate figure. That it's in the ballpark at least.
When I reviewed with him earlier, he thought it sounded reasonable. But again, we'd rather have this installed by the...
Yeah, no, I think it's...
It costs us more, as you can see, it costs the town more than...
Deal with it later.
So, in our condition, we don't need to put in a dollar amount?
No, no, we leave it to the discretion of the town engineer and the applicant.
Well, findings.
Okay. So, drainage, that was the first?
That was the first.
First thing we were talking about.
Yes. And then, we went through and we were talking about some 3D. I don't have the 3Ds because those were only on short form.
Do you have that up, Abby? I couldn't get it up on my iPad.
One of the other comments was, I know that the canopy... For some reason, the line work was light on the previous plans. Well, they changed the plot setting. I don't know, by mysteries of whoever.
This is better.
Yes. So, we went through and we actually revised the plan a little bit. We put some color into it. And then, just to break up the scheme of things, we added a stone veneer on the bottom of the stucco, just to break it up. And then, we matched the columns of the canopy to have the same stone veneer. The columns of the canopy are gonna be in white. The rest of the building is basically like a tan, a beige color. We don't have the full brandon yet, but those are probably gonna be the primary colors of it. And if they do change, the client is aware that he has to come back in front of the board anyway. But as you can see, we also changed where it says store, the sign for the store. We actually elevated that a little bit more because of the height of where the canopy was. We weren't gonna be able to put the sign under the canopy. If you go, I believe, to the next slide, you'll get almost like a head-on view. There you go.
Question, because it wasn't labeled, what's the height of the present building?
The height of the present building is about twenty-three feet nine inches, almost twenty-four feet.
So, it's slightly over two feet that you're increasing the height?
We're increasing the height by one foot three inches.
Oh, I thought it was going to twenty-five.
It's going to twenty-five, but the present one's almost twenty-four.
Almost twenty-four, huh?
Yeah.
So, it's around fifteen inches?
Yeah, and that's basically just a rebuild of the parapet and the cap on it.
There's a little extension to the building in the back. Is that staying?
That is staying, yes.
With, is it, sorry, the same roof, small slope roof off the side?
It has a sloped roof off of the backside, yes.
So, that'll remain, it's gonna be extended up to?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's gonna re...
The roof itself will be horizontal from front to back?
No, on the sides, it actually steps down the way it currently is right now.
Oh, so it's twenty-five feet at the front and then it goes back down a little bit?
Does that show up on the side?
Yeah, if, I believe you go to the next one. One more. You can see the rear corner right there. See how it kinda steps in?
Isn't that the extension though, that we were just talking about?
Yeah.
What happened, the building has a mansard roof, but it doesn't go all the way there?
Right, the mansard stops right at this front line. But this wall is as high as the mansard. So, we're extending this the one foot three just to continue out. But then on the backside, it actually steps down.
But that's just where that extension is.
Yeah.
So, how far back does that go, remaining at the twenty-five feet, that wall?
That goes for about three-quarters of the length of the building.
So...
Let me see.
For the most point, then, the building is pretty much twenty-five feet?
Yeah.
On all, on three of the four sides? Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
There you go. So, if you look at it on the side, here's the step and then it steps again.
Right, there's two steps.
Slope.
Got it.
Yeah, there you go.
And that's all gonna be the same beige?
That's gonna be all the same beige, yes. And then...
The stonework is not gonna continue around the back? It's just gonna stop?
It's gonna stop on just the main portion.
Okay.
Yep.
And, did we talk about the lighting, the light poles?
The light poles, I believe Abby had made a statement that she would like to see them lowered to fifteen feet. Twenty feet, yes.
So, they're depicted there at twenty feet?
That's at twenty feet. And then, you see the large one there? That's actually the street. Yeah.
Right. And that's what, thirty feet?
Yeah. So, it kinda just puts everything into perspective on that end of it. And then, we also shown the pylon sign on there. If you go up, there you go. That's the, but that's at eight feet.
While we're here in this picture, there's a townified curb right along the front, which was the main.
Oh, there's a huge piece of granite in the front, yeah.
So, you're gonna wrap your curving around to meet it?
Our curvings are gonna wrap around to meet it, yes.
Yeah, so is it gonna, here you're showing it's meeting on the street side. On the plans, it showed a meeting more on the property side. Is it gonna be more, makes more sense to put it like this?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, when we do the entrance at that point, if the conditions allow, we will wrap the way we have it there.
So, you're gonna wrap it as close to the street as possible?
Yeah.
What are you referring to? Catch me up.
Right by that design.
Vertical curving? Oh, I was looking on the near one, okay.
See, that is...
Underneath is a real thick green, yeah, that's existing.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very heavy.
It's huge, yeah.
It's a sidewalk to?
Sidewalk's in front of that.
In front of that, okay.
Yeah.
Between that and the curb is the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay.
And...
So, you're wrapping around, but the plans showed a wrapping to the back of it.
Well, actually, yeah. We're gonna push it to this front edge so they meet.
All right, so maybe we should make the condition to make the company doesn't go all the way on the plan.
Yeah, you want to align the rear face of the curb. So, that way the rear faces of the curb line up and...
Is that?
When you say rear, you want the street side of it?
The street side of the curb. Yes.
Is the plantings of the hydrangea and whatever that is?
It's a holly.
Is that what you're hoping for?
Pretty ambitious.
I wish my hydrangeas looked like that.
It's not gonna look like that, yeah.
I wish.
Well, I just wonder if you're putting, just wondering about the gas sign itself.
Yeah.
Legible, that's gonna be readable.
Unfortunately, we didn't have all the time to fool around with the plantings to make them exactly. So, we just grabbed the typical scale.
Sure, I understand that. I just...
I know what you're getting at. Yes, it will be trimmed around the signs so we can read the sign easier, yes. And then, on the sign, if you look, we have a top rail and we have two lights on either side. So, it's externally illuminated, the sign.
Can I ask a question about the plants? Just, you said, you stated earlier tonight that they would be rhododendron and those are shown as hydrangea. Which is it?
Actually, those are hydrangeas there along the front. And then, if you look towards the south wall, they're shown, it's kinda blocked, but those are the rhododendrons.
Okay.
Holly's?
The holly is that large Christmas tree, if you will.
My hollies don't get that big.
Really?
Sadly, no, they haven't gotten that big. I think it's worthy of note. I know it's popular in some communities to put the TVs on top of gas pumps. That might be something to, you wanna have discussions with the town planner about prior to just installing them. It's electronic signage.
Duly noted. Yes.
Yeah, I just want, because the speakers are extremely loud.
We have a gas station to put it in and a lot of them, they've since removed it. Such a problem. And because we also changed the bylaw and I wanted it to be totally eliminated. You wouldn't have them at all. But we allowed so many, but they had many more pumps than that. So, I think we just want to do none at all. Recommend you to do none of that at all.
Well, I think they will because of what happens is the two major dispenser companies here in Massachusetts, one is Argilbaco and the other is Wayne. The Argilbaco ones, the TVs usually sort of blank out after about eighteen months of operation. It's only warranted for a year. And then, for them to replace the TV screens, it's not worth the money. At least with the Waynes, they warranty the TV for as long as you owe something on the pumps. But as soon as the pumps are over, so is the warranty. But those screens usually last about three years.
Well, I wouldn't presume to speak for everyone, but I would have some concerns given how close it is across the street from a residential property, given that the volume of that is not...
Right.
Well, there's two things, sound and...
Yeah, yes.
One didn't even have sound, but we...
Now, I will say...
There are two concerns there, obviously.
We're not proposing any with the TVs on them.
Okay.
But I want to say that under the ADA guidelines, we do have to have a speaker on these for anybody that needs help.
Intercom system.
Absolutely.
Understandable.
They have to push the button to activate it, yes.
It's like having something in an elevator. You gotta have some way to communicate if you can't get to them.
I just want the board to be...
Yeah, you know, that's understandable.
Yeah.
It just hadn't been brought up before in this hearing, so I thought I'd just raise the issue so it...
Sure, absolutely.
Give me noted that we had discussed it. Okay. Any other comments about the canopy, Abby? Or any other information we're not... The lighting?
The shape of the canopy is, again, as I said before, absolutely square, but if you had a company that wanted rounded edges or something, you would just come back to us for a minor modification.
Yeah, I mean, and that just goes with my client if they choose the round corners or the square corners. But if they go with a round, we'll come back and say we're changing it to round. We have to come back for the brandon anyway. So, at that point, we would make the minor modification.
Yeah, you do everything all in.
Yeah.
Just makes sense.
Does everything, does it remain lighted at night? Like, what kind of happens? What's it look like at midnight?
At midnight, the area parking lights, you would have, basically, you'd have the two on in the front. On either side? And then, on the back, you'd have the three on the back lit. At night, just for security for around the building.
So, two in the front and three in the back?
Yeah. Because the backside is extremely dark back there. Roach Brothers property, it's gravel and everything, so...
And the lights on the canopy all will be off?
Lights on canopy will be off.
And the lights on the, there'll be no lights on the dispensers either, if nothing?
Well, the dispensers, they still have a small little light up near the meter. So, that way, when they come fill it or whatever, they usually take a meter reading too. But that's usually lit. It's just a, like a small little nightlight, if you will.
So, usually we fly like an hour after closing all the lights. You go from the daylight and to the night light, the late night light. So, we can just put that condition in an hour after you close it. You have to buy, that's the latest.
Right.
To switch off those lights.
Right. And actually, what would happen is those lights would, those lights would go on a timer. So, it hits that time and automatically shut off anyway.
That's a maximum, you could shut them off as soon as you close it.
What about the wall lights? They're shutting off as well?
The wall lights, the one up near the door would remain, but the other wall lights... They would shut down?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all but, so we have five lights?
Lights total on.
Turned on? And they would remain on till dusk, dawn?
Yeah. Yeah.
Abby, what is there now? Anything?
The lights?
Yeah, was there anything staying on all night?
I don't know if they're on right now. I know there's...
Something on the side of the building.
Yeah, they got some old wall packs hanging. I don't know if they're on or not right now. And I know there's some area lighting, the old style metal highlight lighting.
And are these shielded lights?
Yes, these are all shielded with glass shields on the backs.
Yeah, complete cutoff.
Yeah, complete cutoff on the backside.
I know we talked about it before, but I don't have that information in front of me right now, so...
Is that where the gas prices go back to the road or would that be where?
No, that's where the sign would be. So, the, they would actually have the old style where they'd have to go out there and hang the numbers.
It's not electronic.
No.
It's manual.
Manual.
So, you're not showing the, is that, does that affect the pylon sign or...
That's eight feet, yeah. Yeah.
And that contains just the...
The gas and then it's got the regular...
It'd be the brand name and then the price.
The three price points.
That's it.
Any other signage?
No, just on...
Going on the store?
Just up on the top front.
Okay. So, nothing like sales or anything like that?
Yeah, we're gonna have those big flying men then.
Hours of operation, generally, okay.
Great.
Beyond that. Okay. Beyond that, um, okay.
And what are the hours, do we know that or is that...
Um, I don't know if my client has, uh, looked at his hours of operation yet or not, um...
Would the, uh, the store close down when the pumps close down, is that the idea?
Uh, that, that usually happens unless you're in the middle of the day and you run out of gas, but you still, the convenience store is still open.
You mean if the pumps run out of gas?
Uh, I've seen that happen more than once, so yes.
Okay.
I've, I've, I've seen stations where they've actually sold all the gas because they've had a huge flux in the price or whatever. And then they close all the pumps, but the, the convenience store remains open during the hours, but...
Well, I guess if you run out of gas, you can't sell it.
Right.
So, I understand that. I know that's not how they wanna do business, so...
Right, hopefully not.
Okay, um, with regard to the site, any other questions for the board, from the board?
Uh, snow removal, how's that gonna work?
Very carefully.
I bet.
Snow removal, uh, when they plow it out, more than likely because of such of a tight space, more than likely, they're probably gonna have to remove it from the site, cause there's no place to stockpile it. And, and I mean, that's just, unfortunately, that's one of the, uh, givens of the site. I mean, we got less than ten thousand square feet and we're using like ninety-eight percent of it. Um, I mean, we could pile some up here, but then if Roach Brothers wants to go, somebody's gonna go have to shovel that out, so...
Recipe for some problems.
Yeah, so I, I would say that it, it would have to be removed, uh, from the site.
Maybe remember that in a condition.
So Abby and I spoke about the, what we should do about the right of way. And we were putting in a finding that we agree that, that we find that if these submitted, uh, planes, plans, including the directional signage, uh, would not interfere with the right of way. And then we have a condition in to, for the mouch has to be such that...
Right.
No one will be able to go over it.
Yeah, and, and usually in the back, what, what's happened is, all they do is just spread a thin coat, one to two inches. Uh, and that's about it, so that way if, if they access it, since it's their right, they, they could go over the mulch without worrying about it.
And again, the arrows are for your customers, guiding your customers. They're not for anyone using that...
That right of way.
So they're free to use it as a two-way right of way.
That, that choice is theirs, whatever choice they make.
They decide to use it or not, but we just put in a finding and we'll, we'll...
Yeah.
Check with our town council to make sure we order appropriately so that we find that, that this plant does not interfere with the use of that right of way.
Yeah, I, I mean, it would have been nice if they had submitted some of the information that I asked at the last hearing, uh, just to get roughly some vehicle counts, the type of vehicles. I mean, I know a lot of other, uh, distribution facilities and they know where their trucks are at, what entrances they use. They can tell you exactly where the truck was because they're all outfitted with GPS now anyway. And they monitored tho- all their trucks, so they should have all that information readily available. But for some whatever reason, they never furnished any of it, so we can't engineer for something that we don't know.
Well, it looks to me like, I mean, it's, you don't really need the enter only, because you have, do not enter signs on the other side, so no cars would go in that way, so from the street, all the traffic, it has to come in through the entrance. I'm just thinking that when a, if a vehicle does come through here and there's a big sign that says enter only and arrows and everything, then people's reaction is gonna be that those are a bunch of jugs like going against the law.
I'm, I'm concerned about the liability, that we're creating a confusing situation, or allowing a confusing situation to occur. Because we're telling them, enter only, so people are not expecting a car to leave.
Yeah.
And so should the opportunities arise where there's a truck leaving, um, I agree with you that I think the do not enter here, common sense says you must enter here. I think it's a fairly well laid out, any driver understands there has to be another way in if it says do not enter there. Um, that was my concern.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're remendable to removing enter only and even possibly removing these three arrows?
Well, I, I think there are three things we can do, we can, I think we should leave the arrow, but we can remove the only and just say entrance. Or we can just move the words completely and just leave the arrow.
I, I would, I would find it hard to believe that they would lose business if they didn't have the words enter or enter only here with a do not enter there. I think their people are gonna figure it out and we won't give rise to a potential confusing situation for this use of the right of way. Um, I, I don't, I guess I don't mind the arrow, maybe move the arrow closer in towards the canopy.
Well... In or this way, because normally you drive on your right-hand lane.
I understand, but they're typically coming in to use the canopy area.
Yeah.
And if you put it over...
I was just thinking if we move this over, it kinda creates another lane here without spelling out there's another lane there. That, that was, that was my only, uh, thought, so by pushing it this way, it kinda creates the lane, or the two lane. And removing enter only, and then we can leave the, the arrow on, on the backside.
Uh, yeah, but if they're telling their, their vehicles that they could use this, uh, then they can tell them, don't worry about those arrows because, uh, you know, we have the right of way to go through.
Yeah, I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about the Roach Brothers vehicles using it. I'm worried about the, their customers coming in and encountering something coming when they weren't expecting it because they were made to presume this is an enter only, why is there a car or no truck coming out? That's my concern, is that we are creating a confusing situation. I don't wanna do that to...
Yeah.
The drivers coming in to use you.
I think people will see an arrow and kind of just focus on it, you know, you kind of assume that if, like the same way you assume if you're on the right and the correct, the right side of the yellow line, a lot of people just focus on that and if a car drifts in front of them, I don't know, they don't pay attention. So I think you don't need all these arrows back here, you just need to show the flood through the yellow pumps and if this is an exit only.
Two, two thoughts I had in relation to all that we're talking about. One, um, it was discussed about the parking in the back. And I could see that it will be difficult for people coming in if they see that those two spots are taken, or one is a handicap and the other one is taken. They may not know there's additional parking in the back if all they wanna do is visit the convenience store.
Right.
Um, I think it's typical that if someone is going to use the convenience store and the gas pump, they will use the gas pump, leave the car there, go in, use the convenience store and then come back out. I think that's common practice, everyone understands that. But if they are gonna run in, they, they may create a bad parking situation if they don't know there's parking in the back by parking in that right of way, cause it'll appear wide open, ask for...
Right.
Um, so perhaps there should be some no parking signs along that southern property line?
Yeah, that's, uh, we, we can add a couple no parking here and then we can add just a little sign here that says that...
Parking around back or something like that?
Yeah.
Generally, with the parking in the rear, the employees are...
Well, this space up by the dumpster, cause that's the tightest one, that would be employee, uh, we're parking. And then these other two spaces, there is, if you, if you spread out, uh, this, uh, hatched area here between these two spaces, you'll gain another, uh, little over two feet per space.
They're twenty feet long as it is right now. Uh, normals, uh, out of parking space are eighteen, but if we add another two feet, they'll be, you know, twenty-two each.
Okay.
So you only expect one employee to have a car parked there?
Yeah, yeah, no, there's really not gonna be any more than one, one employee in that location. There's just not enough, uh, pumps to have more than one. You, you would need, um, I believe you need close to twenty fueling positions to have two employees.
Twenty?
Yeah.
That, that's what you, that's the threshold for needing two people?
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
How do you feel about the, um, I know I don't wanna be against handicapped parking, but, but it seems like fifty percent of the parking fronts is not gonna be used because of being a handicapped space, if you're not legally required to have a handicapped space, you'd be double parking if I have a...
Well, yeah, see, that's a, one of those gray areas. Um, we've, we've been up in front of A A B on another matter almost like this and, um, the way they look at it, between one and twenty-five spaces, you need one spot. The building code, if you have, I believe, five or fewer, you need zero.
Yeah, if you wanna be handicapped, I'm fine with that, I...
I, I don't have a problem, my problem is...
How it'll play out, as Dave indicated, but if you wanna be handicapped, I have no problem with that at all.
I mean, to go up to, uh, Boston, to sit in front of A A B and get lashed out because we don't have a spot for five, uh, we, we, we've been there for another client that had almost the same thing and they put them through the wringer. So it, at this point, it's like, it's not worth it to have that, or the battle would...
It's a fifth spot anyway, right, so it's...
No, it's a fifth spot.
Five or less?
Uh, no, out of five or less.
The handicap is the fifth spot, there's three in the back and two on the side.
Right, but, but if they took out the handicap and put the other one in, there would be six, so you would be out of compliance. So you should sort of have to have it anyway.
No, they'd have five, they have four non-handicapped.
They have three in the back and two...
One in the front that's not handicapped and one on the side, I mean.
Oh, they only have two in the back?
They have five total spaces.
Yeah.
One of which is handicapped.
So you're saying, yeah, they could...
They could get away with not doing it legally, but...
They could have five.
You'd rather put it in.
Now, uh, another thing the A A B likes to consider is...
Each one of the fueling positions, believe it or not, they count it as a space. So in reality...
Well, they are customers using...
So in reality, this site has nine spaces instead of five?
I could see the logic.
Theory of it, but, but first I was just thinking that's one parking space and how, how in the world can you even make that work with a convenience store, but is it true that most people just park next to the pump and you have four cars?
Yeah, uh, nin- ninety percent of the people will pull up to the pump, they will, uh, will put their gas in, run in, grab coffee, candy, whatever, newspaper and leave. The other percent will look for a space to actually go in and usually those are the ones that have, uh, children and whatnot with them. Uh, they will pump first and then they will find a spot and go into the store afterwards, most of the time.
Do, do people ever park at the pump and not use the pump and just go into the convenience store?
Oh, they have, yeah.
Never even thought of that.
I've, I've seen them park in front of streets to do that, I've seen them park on Abby's properties to do that, so, yeah, believe it or not.
Um, I, I just share with the board, I visited the site today and found that this particular removable fence section from Roach Brothers, um, it's about fourteen feet wide, nowhere close to the twenty-five feet that, um, are being reserved for them. So they're getting a truck in there that is at most thirteen and a half feet wide. Um, so the need for them to use the twenty-five is, is not there because they physically can't, unless they alter their fencing.
Did you try to lift it, cause I didn't, I couldn't lift it.
No, but it's, I think the evidence of all the, uh, the growth there indicates to me it's not been used for quite some time.
Yeah, I, I mean, they have a three by twelve, fourteen feet long, uh, it's got a weight close to eighty pounds.
It would take a little bit to get that out of there.
I could see if it wasn't an automated arm that went up and down, uh, but it's not even that. I mean, I haven't seen a driver come out of any truck to go lift one of these to move his truck inside.
Plus the, it's not even a paper block behind it.
Yeah, right.
They don't use it.
It's, I mean, it's...
Is that the picture, just in case?
Oh, cause I put, the, uh, the twenty-five feet is about in line with that center, um, expansion joint of the concrete to the left of the manhole?
Right.
Follow that all the way through between those two pilings, no, to the right, Abby. Right about there is twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
And you see that taller bush to the right, that's where that removable ends.
Yep.
So the twenty-five feet extends quite a, um, quite a ways to the left, um, much farther than what, you know, their, the removable part of that fence would allow for.
And, and not only that, but for an eighteen-wheeler to swing around to exit out, they wouldn't be able to make it without ripping down that, uh, guardrail.
So unless they change their fencing situation, they're not really going, in all likelihood, gonna use the twenty-five.
I mean, I understand they wanna preserve the right like anybody else, but...
Well, I think that this...
I think you need to go out of your way to help them.
Make it clear that it's a two-way, that it's not against the law to drive out this way. You know, they could change that however they want.
Yeah, and I think if, the presence of arrows are gonna tell people, and it's just common sense, they're, the only people possibly gonna come out that way are the people, two people parking on the side. They may come out, swing and face this way and...
It'd be kinda hard, cause of the way we angle those spots, it...
Agree, agree, but they do have a large apron that they could, you know, cause of the, the right of way.
Right.
So they could, they could exit, but everyone else pumping gas, they're all pointing in that direction anyway, so...
Well, I suppose if they had a, a smart car, they could make a, a U-turn.
There's no reason for them to object to the arrow being painted because...
No, that doesn't interfere with the use.
They know, yeah, it doesn't, the paint, yeah, it doesn't stop them, they know they have the right to do it and the arrow isn't gonna stop them and it's not anything enforceable by law.
Right.
No policeman is gonna suddenly appear because it's private property.
Right. And, and the other thing, you know, every town has a one ways. It's a right of way, it doesn't say which way you're using it.
Right.
It's a one-way entrance.
So I would prefer, to Dave's point, to remove the, the verbiage, enter only. And my gut tells me the arrow should be closer to the canopy to brought, bring people over who are entering. People tend to follow the arrows, somebody said that earlier. Um, so if it's to the right, that's where they may encounter a truck, in my opinion. If it's to the left, they'll follow and go to the pumps, the canopy, or just shoot up the side. Um, that's just my one person's opinion. The board has a other opposing view on that. But that and the, um, signage, some, some indicating there's parking around back, additional parking in back.
We'll add, we'll add a couple of...
No parking signs there.
No parking there, and then we'll add a sign here pointing, so people can read it saying, oh, parking in rear.
And I...
Part of the history, I remember going down there to, there was a here, um, retired, you know, retired now, there were always junk cars walking this way.
Yeah.
Historically, it was just a graveyard of junk cars and things blocking this.
Repairable cars.
Vintage cars, I think.
Yeah. It has been usable, now here it is, it's clear, so, um, you know, you think you should make it clear that it's not a parking space and have them to, uh, reserve the right of way.
So would you be willing to paint, um, in that area too?
No parking?
Yeah, well, we, we can actually, uh, s- s- stripe it.
Maybe about what?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our width that we need for the, um, the backing up of the vehicle, uh, according to our angle and then we'll stripe the rest.
We'll stripe that side and we'll say, uh, hard no parking right on it.
You think that's too much visually?
Yeah, I don't want too much paint.
I think maybe we put a condition that we, we go...
Well, we'll use a very fluorescent color.
And maybe we start with the signs and if that's not working, as a condition, we say, um...
Yeah.
We're willing enough to stripe it if it's not working, if people aren't adhering to that. And whoever's in the gas station, they need to make sure they, they see people parking there, you guys, they move it, can't stay there.
Yeah.
Um, okay, oh, uh, in the past, we have, um, talked about Gabby, Abby, recycling in addition to trash dumpster?
I like the dumpster.
Um, there's really only, as I see it, room for this, this one dumpster.
Right.
Are there combination dumpsters that you could...
Well, um, right now, that's basically a, uh, a four-yard dumpster.
We could do a split, but the problem is it'd have to be rotated because you wouldn't be able to get the width on it.
If you could do a split, that's a, the side by side, but they usually rotate them the long way. Other than them...
Usually, how wide is the, that op- the, the opening?
Oh, that's five feet wide.
Five feet wide.
Yeah.
The dumpster is usually, is what size?
Uh, that four yarder is about three foot eight, so it's...
In width?
In width. The length is about roughly six feet and then it's three feet high. The length is about roughly six feet and then, uh, it's three feet high.
So you were saying if you, you were picking up an additional two feet to the parking spaces, if you.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we, uh.
That's six feet you pick up.
Uh, we could possibly gain another two feet in here to put in a, uh, recycling area.
But how, how deep is it? You put two in.
What's the depth of a spot?
Nine feet.
Nine feet, yeah, so you could put one in and another one.
Uh, it's.
You move them both at the same time, but.
It's to get the dumpsters out.
Yeah.
That's, that's the.
That's where you need more.
Yeah, normally, uh, with the side-by-side, this length here is actually rotated ninety, so you have the long way this way.
Right. By the time I could walk in, the, if they're three feet wide and there's two, there's five foot, the whole closure is five feet. So you essentially put them sideways.
Yeah, well, if we gain another two feet, we'll, we'll push this out a little bit more and we'll do, uh, uh, recycle.
Cause on the, uh, recycle bins, you can get them, uh, narrower.
Do, do you think it's doable?
If we slide that over, yeah.
Uh, well, the board should weigh in as to whether or not they think that that is a meaningful addition to the plans here or whether they think it's not necessary to add recycle.
No, they should, they should modify it so that they could put a, a trash bin and a recycle bin in there. I don't care how you get them in.
Yeah.
As long as it's usable and.
Does that mean you'll have to go into their, into the right-of-way with the dumpster truck?
Um.
To empty it, if you turn them?
No, because they'll wheel them out anyway by hand, right? Well, yeah, they'll, they'll wheel them out.
Oh, it's only three, I'm thinking of a different size.
They're not that big.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they wheel them out and, uh, load them up, so.
Okay. All right, just as long as that truck's not parked in the.
Right, uh, only to unload.
Okay.
The, uh, receptacle and.
It's got to condition them modified, the size and shape of that as possible so that it's both a recycling container and a trash bin.
Yeah, uh, it'll add about eighteen inches on the width.
Okay.
Does it, does it make sense to, um, consider making the parking space a little bigger and giving up one of them? Like, I mean, it's, I don't think anyone's going to use these spaces back here except for the employee and then there's one more.
Uh, what are they required to have?
Required to have five.
So.
Well, not unless we count the spaces, uh, at the sta, uh, the fueling positions. Then we have more than enough.
Does not include the spaces up.
So that's not an option for us. Okay.
I think the question, um, enclosure material, what was that?
Yeah, the, it's a hardwood paneled fence and then, uh, we, it has a vinyl coating on it.
Does that comply with our regulations?
Should be, um, solid, not, not chain link.
Not chain link, that's correct.
Not lattice?
Not lattice, no. There, uh, the panels are offset of, uh, at the front and back.
So you get one front and one back and they alternate.
How tall is this enclosure?
Six, six feet.
Six, and the, the, the dumpsters themselves are three feet?
Three feet.
Tall, okay. Okay. Um, any other questions by board members? Any members of the audience wish to weigh in or ask questions? No? Okay. Uh, is that all you have to present to us tonight?
All I got.
Okay. Great, that's fine. Uh, any further discussion by the board or Abby, do you have anything else to add? Part of our discussion?
I think you touched on, in those things, um, I think in your packet, um, I know there were some questions last time. I don't know if you saw it in that Dropbox, um, there was, um, the I T E model for the trip generation. Um, and they did show slightly less daily trips with, uh, the service days for this.
Right. That's just confirmed.
Yep.
What we heard last time.
So we can, we can do the waivers now.
Yeah.
Cause, uh, so, so the idea is that given the I T E model, we don't need a traffic study. Believe it or not, and, uh, so, so I moved that we.
I believe it.
Yeah, I moved, uh, that we waived the traffic study.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I also, uh, moved that we, uh, waived the requirement for a model.
Second the motion for the model waiver.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other two waivers, they're precedent alone and need.
Right, cause they've supplied that.
You know, they were, so, so.
They will, right, they will, they're, they're in.
And I can, we will condition that.
In discussion, right.
He gives us the calculation before.
So Abby, you, are you okay with?
It's about the, um, drainage.
Right.
Yep.
Are you okay with how we've postured that with town engineer reviewing, whatever they submit?
We can go over it when you're ready, but, um, unless, I mean, you can.
Okay, so we just talked about the waivers. Um, we have the amended plan. Now we can talk about conditions.
All right, so in the memo I had at your seats tonight, I had updated it throughout the day, so if we had one from earlier, it was the one that was at your seat. So, condition one was your standard condition about approving, um, with modifications.
Uh, we, what page do you have?
Oh, sorry, page four.
Page four of six.
And, and the applicant was provided a copy of this as well. Um. So, okay, so the first, so the second condition, um, was that the applicant would have to provide the final drainage plan to the town engineer along with the calculations. Um, we did review these, but we just want to give them more time to review it as well with the, um, the calculations. Um, the third condition.
And then we want to expand that, that he will get, submit the revised calculations when they have to get the first page.
Okay.
Yeah.
Condition number three says, um.
I think that gets to it, yeah. Three talks about the.
Muting gallon infiltration system, the applicant shall perform soil percolation tests to verify the existing conditions of the soil and assumptions made for the drainage and submit to planning and public works.
Oh, so you just said revised.
Okay.
Conditions, soils revised, calculations and assumptions.
Okay. Um, then the second part of number three, um, was if the town engineer agrees that the soils aren't suitable to do the proposed plan, um, an amount, um, should be, um, submitted by the applicant and the amount of, exact amount, uh, approved by the town engineer after review of the, um, applicant's submission of the construction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, four was one of our standard conditions that, um, public works department, uh, be notified and be present for them, um, to inspect during excavation, installation of the infiltration system. Um, number five, um, was.
They, they should notify and have it, uh, and have them inspect.
Um, number five was about the, um, size of the flowering dogwood. It didn't have the sizes on the plantings?
Yeah, not when they're planted, but, uh, it's normally, uh, a three-inch, we'll, we'll plant them.
That's what we typically like to see.
Where's the dogwood going?
There's two of them actually.
Oh.
Remind me.
There's one here.
The south side.
One here.
Okay, so I make that for.
Okay.
And then, um, all landscaping, um, according to our bylaw, just has to be replaced, um, around.
Right.
Doesn't survive. Um, condition number six. If you can, you missed the warning, this is about, um, your curving to match that existing grade curving.
The street, uh, the face of the curb.
So it'd be.
Should match the street side of it.
Shall meet the straight side of the agus encurving.
Right.
Um. We talked about, uh, number seven was a dumpster and shall be screened from here with a six-foot, um, enclosure constructed of, um, wood and, let's say, wood and vinyl?
Oh, uh, hardwood with a, a vinyl overlay.
Wood slash vinyl.
Oh, oh, it's a, uh, vinyl clad fencing.
Okay. Number eight was about that mulch area, um, we still want that for trucks to be able to drive over that. Did you say two inches or something?
Uh, one to two inches.
Yeah, it shouldn't be just trucks.
Uh, yeah.
Cause they're allowed to bring any.
Any type of vehicle.
It's a vehicle path.
Yeah, but.
I know, but it just should be noted that a car might be going there, not just a large truck.
So make it two inches is fine.
Okay.
No more than two inches.
Um, number three, I mean, number nine was about the signage. Um, so did the board want the final si, design of the signs to return to the full board? Um, right now, the applicant would need relief for the wall signs, cause you're allowed, um, seventy-five square foot, three, three standing sign and then only, I think, twenty square feet wall sign.
Right.
So for the wall and canopy, you'll need relief from the zoning board.
Yep.
So you will have to submit, uh, to.
Right.
So this was, I'd say the way I wrote it was that the final, um, sign package be submitted to me and make substantially different return to the board for our modification.
I think we're going to have to come back anyway for my.
Oh, oh, yeah, on the rebranding.
They won't have a sign package until they have branding.
Yes, it won't be there.
They won't know what they're putting up until they, but yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Okay. Um, okay, so number ten is where I was writing to submit, I guess, revised plans, showing as we talked about with the, um, removing the do not enter sign. I guess.
Move the enter only.
Enter only, sorry. The enter only sign.
Not sign, painting.
On the so, the painting, pavement marking. Moving those arrows over, I guess, if you want.
I think just one.
Does anyone care or, I mean, I think the arrow's fine or, I'm, well, I look at that and I say, why don't they line up? That's what bothers me.
Actually, as I look at the one on the bottom left, maybe it should be on an angle.
Right, so at least the first one.
Not a ninety-degree turn, as a car might, will not do.
Um.
You don't think if it just points towards the canopy, then kind of.
Right, so modify that first arrow to point closer to, would be closer to the canopy?
Yeah.
Yeah, bring it over closer to the dotted line area.
How would you say line it up?
W.
Line it up with everyone, but you wanted it an angle?
You wanted angle this way?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll angle this one here and we'll angle this one here.
It was just a thought.
Or you can make that one out, I left that one.
A sweep.
However you want, just talk it over with Abby.
Just make sure you note that it's Chris's arrows.
CP at the lot.
Also add the two no parking signs along the right-of-way.
Yep.
If, if found to be not sufficient, um, additional no parking paint could be added.
Payment markings.
Payment markings could be added. Um, then also to show that revised dumpster and recycling area.
Mm-hmm.
And the twenty-two foot parking spaces.
Spaces.
Yeah, leaves two spaces, cause that's going to be employee, uh, the closest to the, uh, dumpster.
Should, will that be a sign, employee parking only, or?
Bobby gets that for us. We don't really need the sign.
That's true.
Well, somebody's going to unlock the door, I guess.
The changeover, when the next guy comes in, he's got to park somewhere. Anyway, that's their problem.
Um, number eleven, the light fixtures under the canopy shall be recessed in the ceiling or the lens flush with the canopy ceiling. I think it was shown as flush.
They're, uh, they're actually, um, yeah, they're flush with the canopy, but the fascia of the canopy actually hangs down a little bit. So it, the whole canopy is recessed up into the fascia.
So it's both flush and recessed.
Yeah, all in one.
Flush with the ceiling, recess from the fascia.
There you go.
Fascia, thank you.
I like to be put cut off.
Number twelve was one of our, is one of our standard conditions, that if there's any other permits needed, um, the applicant is responsible for, um, other licensing requirements. Um, that would include the relief, the special controls on the work.
Right.
Prior to renovation, um, you'll have to submit the asbestos, um.
Report. Uh, uh, on that, you gotta just rewrite the word report to.
Yes, I noticed that last year.
Rep.
Sorry, we're, we're in New England.
Fifteen is also related to Board of Health submissions for, um, any food or tobacco products.
Yep.
Oh, and sixteen as well, um, the dumpster also needs to be licensed by the Board of Health. Seventeen is our standard condition related to, um, if there's any damage to anything in the right-of-way, that would need to be, um, compared with brush required permissions from the town.
Right.
There's a two-year, um, this is a local for two years and you have to get an extension from, from the board.
Should, would there be anything in there, uh, the public right-of-way or the other right-of-way?
We have a finding we're going to put in.
That any damage occurs to the other right-of-way, they have to fix it? The Roach Brothers right-of-way? Just, I mean, we mentioned the, the town's right-of-way. If they, if they wreck the pavement.
Yeah, cause we're the town, that's why.
Yeah, I know that.
We're not Roach Brothers.
Okay.
If someone damages a fence on a neighbor's property, that's between them, it's not.
Right.
It's not what I'm concerned about.
All right.
Worst-case scenario, we can just leave it all gravel, like their lot.
Number nineteen, the property of the decision shall be kept on site at all times and the, the final revised plans, any modifications, return to the planning board. Um, a final as-built, certified as-built plan submitted after. Um, and then I added a, a couple while we were talking, um, that there shall be no, um, radio speakers, um, or TVs at the.
There are no TVs, but we have to have a speaker for A, the ADA.
Intercom.
Yeah, intercom.
They were like radio speakers.
Accessibility.
Um, then all the, all the lights, number, and the next one, twenty-three, all lights shall be fully shielded, um.
Not shielded, but for cut off.
Oh, is that.
Cut off, yeah. Yeah, it is a difference.
Oh, yeah. Um, the non-security light shall be, um, turned off an hour after the close of business. So that excludes the five lights at N five.
Right.
The front, the two in the front.
Two in the front, three on the rear and one wall pack at the entry.
Yes, they are lights with those exceptions.
And then lastly, I have in my notes from tonight, um, the snow shelter will be off-site.
Yeah.
All right, only the assmann.
No, we don't, yeah.
You don't, you don't usually.
If they can't get in there because there's so much snow, we're going to have to do it.
Well, they, yeah, they can't block the parking and they can't block the right-of-way, there's nowhere else to put it, so.
They gotta.
You're going to have to remove it. Otherwise they violate the condition.
Is there a question back on the, uh? Is that the, the pricing sign, is that like a six-foot sign?
Pylon is now.
Right.
The pylon is eight feet high.
Pylon sign, and they had noted on a site plan that it was eight feet.
Right.
Yeah, proposed eight-foot-high pylon sign.
I think.
Is that the one that has the prices?
Yeah, it has a price.
Yeah.
It has a name and then the price is all right, yeah.
But it's no higher than eight feet.
Right.
Total.
Does anyone else have any?
I don't think so.
The, the overall lighting, yeah, as on the plan, twenty feet.
The, mark the sightlights.
Yeah.
So it was three lights in front and two in back?
No, three in the back, two in the front.
Reverse that. So I see three lights on the street, which.
The two that would remain on is, um, this one and this one.
Okay, so the middle one, you rely on the streetlight to kind of light it up?
Right.
Right, so the, no, there's, there's one there, there's one there and there's one there.
Right.
And then there's, the town has another one there.
Town has one.
There's four lights total, three will be pointed in to your property, one will be pointed over Washington Street.
Yeah.
But it's the two corner ones.
The two corner ones.
Yeah, the two corner ones that will remain on.
Where are the three in the back?
Uh.
I see two, oh, after the turn?
Yeah.
Okay, I see it, okay, I gotta know, I didn't, I missed that one.
Yeah, one, two, three.
So the one in the front there at the entrance, in which direction was that pointing, is that light going out into the street?
Bring up that rendering again, Abby.
Oh, it says, well, the cut-off shield, does that keep the light going out into the street, or?
The cut-off shield, uh, is, yeah, would have it on, on the street and the, uh, uh, neighbor's side.
Yeah, I see those three right there in the front, there'd only be, uh, the two, uh.
Two on the corners.
Yep.
One a step back a little.
So that one, you see just the word gas, let, let the word gas have a shield on it.
They are, yeah.
So it doesn't go across the street, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a list of twenty-three conditions? Small store, it's a lot of conditions.
And then, so what's before you is, um, the EIDR, and it's also a special permit for, um, a waiver of the, um, landscaping screen, um, a waiver, um, it's already a non-compliant, um, landscaping.
To any special permit?
Special permit and EIDR.
Okay, what would you like us to discuss first? A special permit or the, uh?
Special permit, I should, um, I said recommend, recommend approval because it's improvement from the current commission.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So, I move that we grant a special permit, uh, for the.
The landscape screening?
Cause of the limited size of the property, uh, and the improvement that we have from no screening.
No landscaping.
Landscaping or screening, uh, to, to the landscaping proposed, that that landscaping for that lot is adequate.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second?
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, EIDR.
I move that we, uh, approve the EIDR with the aforementioned conditions.
I second the motion for approval.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all of your patience and all your work, really appreciate it, and good luck, I hope it works out, looking for the improvement, isn't it? Nice plan, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, oh, yeah.
Those because the public hearing.
Second, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, we're gonna revise the plans to incorporate the conditions of the planning board, so that way we'll get you the revised plans with the due diligence, and that way you'll have what everything will be.
Okay, when do you think you're gonna do that?
Uh, we should have probable in the next week or so.
Okay.
Uh, we'll have it, uh, done before the, uh, field period's over anyway.
Okay, cool, good luck.
So I'm gonna, I'll send out the decision.
Thank you, good night.
Decision to, um, and let me know if you're running to change it, I'll try to, or.
Give us a few days.
If you need to check those, maybe tell them that.
Uh, you gotta help them out for us.
If you get it, yeah, that should be enough time. Alright, uh, Abby, do we have any signings to deal with?
The cover sheet for this one, so I still have to write the whole rest of it, but we, um, three ninety, Washington Street.
Is that it for signing? Okay, um, ZDA app, next review?
Oh, yes, I just, um, I don't know if everyone had a chance to review it, but you did, uh, the zoning board received an application for, um, the closest definition we have in our zoning is a motor vehicle repair. Um, it's, it's a business that they install, um, accessories in cars, like Bluetooth, Bluetooth, navigation systems, um, so they need a special prep from zoning board, there's system buildings, the zoning.
Where is it?
Um, it's on the corner of University Ave and Canton Street, um.
Which corner? The Canton corner or the Westwood corner? The Canton, across the street? Closer to the street, closer than the Ponza River.
Yes, it's, it's a building between University Ave, Canton Street, and the Ponza River, and, and it's the.
Like the Graybar Building?
Used to be, yeah.
Graybar, yeah.
Yeah.
Really just cut down all those trees for no apparent reason?
Last one's, one, one, university, that corner of the building.
Okay, do they have a drive-in bay and stuff to pull cars in to work?
That's it.
That's all they have?
No, they don't.
So the triggers for site review are, um, parking alterations, exterior changes, or change of use, um, when I, when I, the applicant dropped off the application with the zoning board, um, I said they weren't proposing any exterior changes except for the, um, garage, so it sounded like maybe it could be an administrative review, however, I realized that garage is right where landscaping is, so I notified them yesterday that, um, so our co- I think your comments from planning board to the zoning board will be that they need to come in and file an EIDR, um, so I notified them yesterday, and they're working on trying to submit an application to, um, cause this is a property in the late nineties, I think, had, um, an EIDR approved, and all that landscaping in front had, the trees have recently been cut down, so.
So these, these are trees, yeah, these seem to have nothing to do with this.
These are the.
Right.
Recently, the trees have been cut down.
This is that building?
Right.
Yes.
Right on the corner?
Yeah, right there.
Right on the corner, the site has three buildings on it, but it is, the space is.
Where do they wanna access the driveway through the side road?
So on the side, so the side, you see all that landscaping there?
That's not a road.
No, that's the driveway.
Yeah, see, that landscaping, or?
Uh, yeah, the landscaping you see right there.
That's a tree.
Uh, well, actually, I haven't, uh, there are a couple of spaces there now.
Yeah, there are a couple of spaces, they have, there's a sidewalk there too.
But the drawing we looked at didn't have spaces there, they just drew them in by hand.
Look at, there's a whole sidewalk going across the way there.
Have they installed more spaces with, I don't know?
Haven't been out yet, the site I was looking at was in nineteen ninety-nine.
Goes all the way.
Yeah.
Are they gonna, they're gonna drive over the sidewalk?
Yeah.
I assume that's a curb, too.
Alright, obviously, they're losing some parking spaces, we thought they were putting out, eliminating some more landscaping in order to, uh, put cars next to the entrance.
So they wanna add bays in here?
One bay, just one.
One bay with a garage door on the end of the building.
Yeah, so that they would bring the cars in and work on them inside the building.
On that end, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, it seems to me they need to come in.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're crossing over a sidewalk, they're gonna have to dip the sidewalk down with a ramp of some, I mean, to get in there.
The plan that was submitted was the old nineteen ninety-nine plan, it's different onsite than what we did then, so.
Could you, could you check the plan, see if there are those parking spaces there or not, because they, they looked at.
They were on the.
They weren't on the plan, those, those parking spaces, was, that we, the plan that she showed me.
Something in the last seventeen years.
Yeah, there's some spaces.
There are nine spaces, ten spaces, the width of the, of the building.
Uh, yeah.
There's ten spaces from there to there.
Yeah.
That they're possi- you know, they're affecting at least two or three.
So, and we showed the last one, it was seventeen years ago?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Oh.
So I wonder who added these spaces?
Alright, well, look for it, make sure, just see my name on it, and it should be, uh, then I know that's, well.
That's really, you guys talk about that on your own.
Alright, I only remember one, once I'm coming in.
Well, they're gonna come back, so we can talk about this anew.
Yeah, no, but the point is, um, we saw a disagreement with the, with that decision and with what we see here, so we're likely to resolve that, so definitely wanna speak to them.
So I guess we go to the property owner, so that's probably something more with the property owner than, so we can work with the applicant.
Yeah, and not, this is a new tenant, they don't have anything to do with what happened before.
Right, but I did tell them it was a change of use, so they are working on it, they're trying to submit this week, first October twenty.
Okay, I would think they should come here, like, that's just my opinion, it seems like it's enough of a change here, change of use, change of the building, change of the parking lot. Agree or disagree?
I, I, well, again, I looked at a different plan, and I thought that was the plan we approved, and if that option is approved, that means they've already removed some trees and landscaping and put in parking spaces, so we have to resolve that.
If you have a moment, drive down, next time you're at university, duck in there and.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure that picture was correct.
Put eyeballs on, oh, I'm, a two thousand sixteen image, so.
He's a brand new, his Google's like, very up to date.
So given, given that they have recently cut down trees on the front, they cut down.
Well, those are all cut down, so this is that recent, that picture?
It's that recent, wow.
So this picture incorporates the cut.
Yeah, they cut down all those trees.
And promptly put up a release sign, I think that was like the.
And, and in addition, they cut down these trees, and there's, uh, the, the outlet from all the drainage in the areas right there, which means they would have to go before the conservation commission, they were a hundred feet to cut down those trees, and they did not.
Apparently they had a.
Looking forward to that one.
Yeah, okay, um, university station updates, phase one sale, Target roof solar proposal?
Right, so you may have seen the article or heard that after your last meeting, you released the covenant, then the board of selectmen did, um, approve all of their releases and changes, so that, that core development area was, um, sold to this other company, um, that's what did happen. Um, then also, um.
Not the existing vacant, just.
Right, the first phase of the, yeah, phase one, the finished area.
Right, okay.
Did anybody, I'm curious if anybody found that sort of surprising, like, I mean, I knew they came in and said they were gonna, they were looking to refinance investment.
Did you read the article that was in the?
I was just sort of, I saw that.
The, the article, you kind of, the article, there, the, the, the center was in what, what magazine, or some business?
Boston Business Journal.
Boston, it, it kind of explains it very well, that is a typical thing that's done with investments.
Yeah, they wanna free up money to go, look onto a new project, they don't wanna tie it up here.
Plus, plus, real estate investment firms wanna have real estate to invest in, so.
They're happy to sit on it and wait to sell it.
Doesn't make much of an investment fund.
Sell out the other.
Not much of a fund if you have money in it.
Developers don't wanna hold land, they wanna s- make it and sell it.
Um, we did also, um, Target has submitted, um, for solar panels on the roof, um, we consider that an accessory use, um, so there's only really, I review it as a, um, consistency review to the master development plan, if anyone had a chance to look at any of the plans, if you had any comments, to let me know, um, so I have to review it, um, for consistency with the overall master development plan before they get their building done. They were showing, I think it was over, I think it'd be five hundred kilowatts of solar, and then, um, it's a lot of panels, but, um, they are set back twenty feet from the edges of the building, um, seeing, I haven't thoroughly reviewed the plans, I will later in the week, but, um, it doesn't appear that you can see it from ground level, although if you're up above on.
You're obviously gonna see.
Yeah, but right, right, you see now is a massive, huge, boring, white roof.
White, looks like it's February.
If you're up at N star, looking.
Yeah.
And it's, but, but actually, it's very appropriate, the N star.
Looking down and seeing their money, looking, seeing, seeing their money disappearing right before their very eyes. Or perhaps coming in, I don't know if they're over.
They don't, relegated to our solar chain, we did last year.
Right, we, in, um, highway business and industrial zones, we allowed it to over that, um, fifty kilowatts, it was a special permit.
Right. So was that fifty, was it special?
In local business, it was fifty kilowatts, needed a special permit from, from.
Right, okay, okay, um, oh, clear channel, digital billboard, what's happening with that?
I still, um, they have not submitted, Clear Channel's not submitted their application yet, but they, they noticed that one out that we received, was that they're going to be filing, um, I checked with the state, so that public hearing, they said it'll probably be the earliest, early October.
What's the name of the entity within the state that oversees all that? Steve, do you remember?
Some outdoor advertising.
Outdoor, yeah, outdoor advertising board, yeah.
Outdoor advertising board, um.
And they have full and final say, with possible influence from each town?
Well, they have rules they have to go by.
Yeah.
Uh, rules that have been, I think.
But they're the permitting entity.
Stretch way too far, uh, but they do have rules they have to go by, and we went last time, and we pointed out this is a violation of their very own rules. There's a certain distance between highway exits, so they can't put them, and this violates that, it's, cause it's right between two exits, so it's, it's too close to the exit before it, it's too close to the exit after it.
Yeah, the exit going ninety-five south, and then the University Ave exit?
The exit is, is the, yeah, the, uh, the, no, the Blue Hill Drive on ramp, and the ninety-five.
Going south to Rhode Island.
South Road on, yeah, off ramp.
Right.
Plus, plus there's, and here's where they stretch things, uh, they're only in commercial districts, so is this a commercial district? Well, it's being built right next to a hotel, it has a residential area right there, and a lot of those residents did show up to put in their opinion on this.
But now we have also the apartment residents.
And they have, and we have additional apartment residents, it's a mixed use, which means, it's not a commercial area, it's a mixed use, which means there are residential uses there.
Okay.
So I still, I still will need to draft that and send it to you, um, last time we also, and we, we got to do again, is also have the board of selectmen send one, and our, um, send to our representatives as well, so I will do that.
Okay.
Sometime soon.
So, again, I mean, I don't know why they're doing this again, we're, I went and I spoke last time, I'll have to go and speak again, but town of Westwood is totally, entirely against it, town of Denham's entirely against it, the neighbors are all.
Just to make sure that they haven't changed their own rules since then.
And, uh, so I don't know.
Get ahold of their internal documents.
What is different?
Oh, that, that could be what's different, maybe they changed their rules.
And the previous, the previous, uh, MassDOT secretary asked me, you know, is the town interested in, you know, receiving, uh, revenue from this sign? I told him absolutely not, so, I mean, don't see why they don't get it.
Um, Abby, actually, I just had a, a thought, I was down at the train station, is there any, have you heard anything with regard to the train station allowing, um, the alternate use of that door for the walkway?
No, I haven't, this is, um, that door in the back.
And I know that they, yeah, they wanna change that to a, a pedestrian access into the train station.
To the hotel.
I saw Homeland Security was gonna have to sign in, sign off on that.
No, I know we've been pushing after that, but we haven't, I haven't gotten the update.
Okay, I was there and just happened to see the door, I was on the platform, I saw the door, and it reminded me, I'm like, yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, some are just seeing only the door now, and it hasn't been made, and of course, it should be improved also because, uh, to make it nicer, so.
It really is not a pedestrian-friendly train station to, to access, you're, you're walking in, it doesn't welcome, and that would be a nice, at least from the Marriott's point of view.
Yeah, that's the whole point of the whole design, where we have, for right along for all these years, but by the way, speaking of, of panels, uh, the T has announced that they were, think they're going to be putting, uh, solar panels on parking lots and garages, and the wood one twenty-eight garage would be one of them.
Solar panels on the, on the top?
Yeah, they would mount on the roof, yeah, you know, above the cars, the cars drive in.
Maybe that'll keep some of the water, hopefully that'll keep some of the water from leaking through the whole building.
Well, that's another, that's another thing we have to get after them for, uh.
Level of maintenance there is really.
Here it is August, and, but by winter, by winter, they should, they're supposed to seal those cracks so that the water doesn't come in and create hazardous conditions on the floors below, right, when it freezes, uh, and last year, they made a mild attempt in. Uh, and last year, they made a mild attempt and, and, but improper material crocking them and it didn't work. Uh, so they have yet to do it properly.
Um, have, anything on Del Frisco's coming before us? Anytime soon?
They're supposed to be, they were gonna try to submit something to us really soon. They were hoping for one of your September meetings. I haven't seen anything yet, so, um, we could ask.
Okay.
And also, hopefully sometime soon about the second phase of village area.
Yeah.
Um, they were trying to set both those two for September.
What about the Marriott? Are they, when are they gonna break ground?
They, they have, they're moving, they're moving-
I saw them moving earth, but-
They're moving dirt around, yeah. I assume they're doing more.
Yeah, they had started foundation or excavated the foundation.
Okay, so they're, they're-
Something's actually happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are moving dirt back and forth.
Well, it's typical. Get somebody out there, get somebody out there to push some dirt around.
Maybe they found that little walkway that we told them.
Agonizing over.
Okay, um, committee reports.
I was remi-
Did you go to the conference?
I missed it. Now, I, I saw the agenda and I, I got, I was not motivated to attend, but, um, so I missed it.
It was about, it was about-
What was it?
Autonomous vehicles or something. Didn't really feel compelled, but I didn't really have time anyway, so, so I missed it.
No, I didn't, I, no, I, I just can't make it in the summertime, uh, given my schedule with the racing in the evening. Have to be on the boat and, and, you know.
All right. Uh, anyone else have a committee report they'd like to share in Manhattan?
So, uh, what happened?
What, what did you attend?
Oh, MPO meeting.
Okay.
And, and there's some rulemaking that would change the, uh, MPO regions and make it much, much larger than it is now, uh, to conform to the whole, uh, what do they call it? Metapoland, you know, area. And so I, they were, naturally were, the, MPO was against it, and I made sure that they were very much against it because it was, it would, it really would destroy all we've been working for to get local participation in the MPO and, by creating a giant MPO, which would run into New Hampshire and even Rhode Island.
Seems ridiculous, yeah.
Yeah, they would destroy all of that, and, uh, so we asked that, that rule be mo- mod- modified or removed.
Okay. Um, I know, Abby, we ran that email about the fair housing with the Habitat for Humanity house.
Oh, yes, um-
We were supposed to meet, but then that got postponed till September.
I don't think they've set a date. Um, the proposal for the Habitat house on Hyatt View, I think five Hyatt View, was uphill. Um, that was, that was, it's only worse last evening in July, um, so that will probably come back for, 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 for any application.
Hmm, okay.
So then the Housing Partnership was trying to organize a meeting, trying to meet before that application was filed, so it should probably be in October at least.
Okay.
Who's the alternate on the, on the, uh, MBTA advisory board? Oh, you are? Oh, uh, yeah, they're, they're having a tour. Did you get, do you want me to?
Oh, I saw that was the tour of, uh-
Yeah, I, so I went on the tour that the advisory council gave of the, uh, what they call the, uh, the Boston Engine Terminal, which is where they, uh, repair and fix all the engines and the cars for the commuter rail. Uh, and it's very impressive, uh, so if anyone's interested in going, uh-
The commuter rail maintenance facility.
Yeah, in summer, though. Very, very large building.
It's big. I go, I go by it a couple times a week on-
Yeah, you can see it from ninety-three. It's a huge building you see. And they just put whole trains in there and, and do all the repair work on them.
When they do, when they do the repair work on them, I guess, right?
Yeah.
I'm just joking.
They actually even bring them in there just to fuel them up.
Uh, that's impressive.
Um, anything from Islington Task Force?
Uh, we have our next meeting on the eighth, and, uh, that'll be the, the meeting where we actually discuss the proposal, the Petruzzella proposal, um, for the first time, so, in detail, yeah.
And then, and then the following week is reserved if, if the four task force decides to, um, resenterating the application, then they can write that, come back the following, become fifteen four, the presentation.
Right. Um, I know Nora's out here, and I know we talked about the three of us getting together prior to the eighth to just collect our thoughts about the proposal. I mean, the, the first and the second look fairly open for me. If you guys wanna shoot me a time on those dates, I don't know if that's a possibility.
Nora's out right now, but she's in a little friend.
Okay. Oh, well, that's probably not gonna work for her, then.
Is that task force meeting likely to be, is there a lot of public input or is it just me or task force? I know there's always public input, but is it a, which one should I, should I, should I go to the eight or the?
I don't know.
I mean, the fifteenth will be more of a presentation from the applicant, but I think on the eighth will be, you'll hear the discussion and, just like you do, like your deliberations, like you'll at least hear their perspectives on how they're reviewing the application, um, what their thought processes are. So, I mean, I, I would think it's, I'd say the eighth to really, that's what they're gonna probably go through with the application.
Well, they're gonna make the decision whether or not they're gonna support the application.
Yeah, well, I don't really support it.
Well, more, more do we wanna see the, wanna hear directly from the applicant.
Right, just, cause you're probably at least, if it doesn't meet the, um, specific criteria that, um, had to meet, then they won't even invite you back on the fifteenth.
Right.
So the community hasn't done that. So, yeah, I think the eighth is when they're gonna really review it to make sure it meets the requirements. You have a presentation on the fifteenth. And then, I don't know if it'll be the fifteenth or maybe after that where you might, they might just make the recommendation and then put forth something. Probably not on the eighth, probably after.
Probably not, yeah. I think after, if we're even gonna consider it, we would have to let them talk and hear what their real vision is, I think. Um, so, yeah, so there's that, and then they, they moved the, they moved the tavern, I assume you've all noticed.
So I, yeah, the, they moved the tavern.
Yeah, it was like a day early, wasn't it?
No, it was Saturday, yeah.
It's supposed to be on Sunday morning.
Sunday, but it's-
Yeah, I, I drove by on a Saturday, like-
Oh, you told me, yeah.
Somebody grew a house.
Anyway, I was, I was the only one there from, over any, you know.
Well, cause I was thinking it was Sunday.
Oh, is that why no one showed up?
I'm sorry, did I say Saturday?
No, you always-
You did say Saturday.
You did say Saturday. I didn't, I was thinking it was Sunday.
But we always discussed it would be on a Sunday morning.
Yeah, the least traffic.
Oh, oh, but believe me, they moved it so fast, hardly any cars had to be detoured.
Five light cycles?
Yeah, it was like, nothing. And, uh, but the developer was there and he had a drone and he took pictures of it, so-
Oh, cool.
Turn it in, so you'll be able to see the building move and you see some little figure standing next to it.
So-
Steve, witness, bearing witness.
They're putting fencing up, right? In front and inside?
They were supposed to, right, I forgot to turn it on.
He had temporary fencing, so they just had to convert it.
Okay, right, that was a condition.
No, but where it is sitting now.
It was a site, but, yeah, where it sits now, they wanted, they were gonna do fencing also.
Yeah, in front, in front of where it's sitting now, there's no fencing up yet.
At all?
At all?
He had, he had some temporary stuff already to go, but I didn't see him put it up.
All right, you're right, that was a condition, we have a condition of, but that's another.
Yeah.
Head is up today.
So I don't know what happened, but he had, he was, last when I left, he had the fen, the temporary fencing and was ready to-
It's, it's been three days since they moved it, and there's no, nothing up. Like, drove by today, didn't see it, so we need to remind him to do that.
He's a busy guy. I drove by his Denham, his Denham Development the other day. It's, uh, they were, they were working Saturday, too, so they must have entered the gun to get it, get it, get it opened up or ready for re- so, or something, so it's pretty, uh-
Good.
Pretty cool.
He's busy.
But if you know anything about the, um, Marshall Street, that property that was, that was developed.
On the corner?
Yeah, the corner of Marshall and Washington.
I know that that developer was, that location had been talked about as a possible place for the, the Heart Tavern to, to land. Right on Washington, yeah, there was a, there was a multifamily, a multi-unit building that burned down in like the eighties.
Yes, that's, that was recently by the zoning board for a two-family. That's closer to, um, like-
It's right on the corner of Washington.
That's heading, yeah, south on Washington Street.
Yeah, that was, um-
Goes up in Dead Ends by Zavarian Parking Lot.
So, new two-family, I think, that was, I think maybe a mayor junior group by the zoning board.
Oh, the one on Mustclamp that used to?
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's been, that's our spot for many years.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a parking lot for excavators and backhoes for quite some time.
All right.
Okay, um, next meeting?
Minutes.
Oh, sorry, approval of minutes. Anyone see any problems with what was sent?
Oh, he, there was just one problem, it, when I mentioned that we did a minor modification, and then we approved the minor modification, it was, the wording was not, on the first one, was we, we approved that it was a minor modification.
Okay.
Then we approved the minor modification, it wasn't clear on the first.
Oh, this was on the tree, right, three different addresses? I mean, for-
Right. Oh, oh, no, 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 I was confused. Oh, cause there were two different addresses, it was confusing.
Yeah, because of the, the one tree that needed to be removed.
We, yeah, one tree was on two properties, or I, you might, or-
No, it's, it was the cyclane showed the wrong address, um, right.
I think the cyclane was the right address, it was just, it was wrong on the plant.
So why did we, uh, so why did we, why did we make two motions on that?
Well, because, um, um, one of them really needed a bit, needed the minor modification, and I guess the other one was, um, that tree must have been removed sometime in the past, cause it wasn't there, so I guess.
There was one tree that was closer to the sign, and then this tree that we talked about was still impeding the vis, the vision of the sign, but it wasn't.
Yeah, so that was two ninety-five, but I think that address was two ninety-five, um, that tree is here now.
And the planting of that tree was a condition of the planning board.
But on that plan that I guess CSX had, or that we've been working off of with, um, said three fifteen, so we just, um, because, and then I put one in the file for the three fifteen, cause that was removed in the past, not now.
Minutes were, the minutes were just as, as confusing, like, the meeting was-
Discussion.
So they were accurate.
Sounds about right. Yeah, accurate depiction of the, uh, yeah. Janus is amazing.
How, how did she do that with the written word?
You might wanna make it-
She should write screenplays.
That's all I, other than that, I, we, we pulled those minutes.
She shouldn't capture a moment. Second to-
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, next meeting is September sixth, um-
Well, you don't have any applications on right now?
Till we're free.
Till we're free, moving on.
I'm kidding.
You're okay with holding a case of things up there and then?
Well, yeah, I think we have to. We've already slotted the time on our schedule, so.
And I guess if, um, you know, maybe the Thursday before, if something comes up, should we modify it or something?
It is, yeah.
We'll defer to you and your judgment.
Well, it's gotta be forty-eight hours, but Thursday would be good.
It's Labor Day weekend, too, so be good to get it.
Is that?
Oh, yeah, I can't, you can't-
The fifth is, the fifth is Labor Day.
It's Tuesday.
So you have to do it, you really wanna do it on by-
We can do it right now, it's fine by me. It's good.
I'll do it by Wednesday.
We haven't, we didn't push anything out to it, right?
Yeah, we cleared up the gas station.
We're in a hurry to slot for that day. Okay, well, keep us informed about that, um-
What ever happened to, um, the, uh, Westwood Estates thing? Like, that's still floating out there?
Yes, it is. That was continued to September twentieth. I need to follow up with them because I have not, um, heard anything, seen anything, shut there with them in a while, no updates, but that was September twenty, so that's about a little less than a month away.
Do you know if, have they already bought the land?
Um, some of it, mine, I don't know, where it comes in, but not that they're, not the-
They haven't bought the land from that estate. They just bought the house on Hedge Road to gain access to the estate. So.
Dottie Power's house.
Yeah, so this sale might be the condition, or this project may be the condition of their sale? Interesting, well, good luck to them. Hope they come up with a, a plan.
And, uh, the Westwood Day?
Yep.
Um, actually, just in case if we don't have a meeting on the sixth, um, I know they're really looking for volunteers to help with, um, a variety of tasks throughout the day, like parking attendants, all sorts of kind of things, just like, all different things. They could send you a link if you're interested. They, so we were thinking we'd have a booth, like we normally have a booth, and then if, if you could let me know the timeframes, we could maybe stagger it so one or two of us are there at a time. And then if anyone else has extra time or, um, would rather be doing one of the other volunteer events, I'll send you that link, cause they're really looking for, they really need help with the other, um, stuff, not just the people, so I'll probably-
But they need adults, a lot of times they have high school kids, do some of it.
They do have high school kids, but they say they need lots, they need a lot more volunteers, yeah, for, also, and stuff. Yes, they are doing, yeah.
That's going, yeah, yeah.
So the, um, Productive Bike Safety Committee is gonna have it on, um, um, not move it up.
Well, if, positive, why not, uh, what we did the first Westwood Day is we had a time slot signup sheet for the planning board tent, or the, um, not planning board tent, the, the town hall tent, planning department. Um, so maybe that would be a good way to make sure that we have a member of the board there for, you don't have to be there the whole day.
No.
But maybe from start till, what time's it start? Nine?
I wanna say around nine.
No, no, oh, no.
Later? Ten?
Ten, ten or ten, yeah.
So maybe like ten to two, or ten to three?
Because they have activity, they have races and stuff before the-
Oh, yeah, there's a race at like nine AM, like, maybe it's like ten to-
So whatever time it starts.
Ten to three, I think.
So if I-
Weather, I'm sure will be-
Yeah, do like an hour and a half shift.
Yeah.
So if I send that out to, uh, you wanna-
Just pick a slot that works.
Sign up, and then I'll also send you the, um, oh, so the what, um, Westwood, um, Rec Department has created a website where people can sign up to volunteer at different activities and time slots as well, so then-
Can you send that link to us?
I'll send that out to you.
Yeah.
I know you're already doing, you know, volunteer a lot of your time, so, so, I'll probably try to, to set up to, like, um, any-
Okay. All right, all right. Islington Task Meeting, September eighth, we already said that?
Yep.
I think we're done. Steve, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to, I can make a motion to adjourn the, uh, the meeting?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming.